Okay. Melissa, City Clerk, let me know when we're ready?
We are ready.
And City Manager, are you ready?
Recording in progress.
Sorry.
No problem. Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the San Bruno City Council Special Meeting of May 8. May, hello. June, June the 8th, 2021, 5 o'clock to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Mason? She was here a moment ago, so I think she might be having some trouble. Councilmember Medina is coming in the room now. Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. Thank you. Now we'll move on to item number three. Public comments for items not on the agenda. Tonight is a study session into regard to the design of the Recreation and Aquatic Center. So if anyone in the public has something they'd like to speak on, other than that, now would be the time to please raise your hand, and we would go ahead and call up on you. Okay, seeing no hands at this time, we will move on to the study session item, and I would ask if the City Clerk could call that item to the public's attention.
Yes, item 4A. Adopt a resolution approving the design of the Recreation and Aquatic Center, authorizing the city manager to execute construction contract with Blathrop Construction, Inc. for the project in an amount not to exceed $43,310,000, approving a construction contingency of $4,687,046, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Nino and Moore, Inc. to provide geotechnical engineering and materials testing inspection professional services for the project in an amount not to exceed $396,262, and approving a total project budget in the amount of $59,982,288.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. Appreciate it. And now I'd like to turn over to our City Manager.
Good afternoon, members of the City Council and members of the public. Javon Grogan, City Manager. It is my pleasure to be with us, with you this evening, and to present this item, support the discussions, and support the City Council through the recommended actions tonight. I am joined here by Don Merkels, the architect for the project, and Anne Matola, the Community Services Director, who will oversee this beautiful facility once it's constructed. We also have representatives from the construction management firm that will be assisting with the construction of this building. And so we come here tonight, as the council and the public knows, after a long process that really began in 2013, where this City Council created the San Bruno Community Foundation to manage $70 million of restitution settlement from PGE following gas pipeline explosion that occurred in the Crestmore neighborhood in 2010. In 2015, 2015, six years ago, the foundation launched a community listening campaign around the use of the $70 million that was allocated to the foundation. And we know in 2015, that process started. It was concluded in 2016. And in 2017, we started conceptual design on the facility that is before you for action tonight. And so as a reminder, the actions that are before the City Council are adopting a resolution to approve the design of the aquatic and recreation facility project, authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Later Construction for just over $43 million, also authorizing Nino and Moore to conduct geotechnical testing and inspection services related to the project, and approving a project contingency for construction of 4.6. And that brings us to a total project total of $59.9 million, just under $60 million. And we'll talk about frankly all aspects of the project in a little bit. So our agenda for tonight are really five items. We'll talk about the process and have a project overview. We'll give an update on permitting. We will then talk about the awarding of the bid, next steps, project schedule, and then finally, the City Council action. It's worth noting that we will talk about the process for the construction document phase and the phase for permitting and bidding that we've been in. But the City Council and the public will remember there were three phases that preceded that. There was conceptual documents, a conceptual design of the facility. There was schematic design, design development, and then construction documents. And so a little bit of the process overview for this construction document phase. It began in February of 2020. There were four primary categories of meetings and boards and commissions that we interfaced with. The first one was the Advisory Committee. That was made up of eight to 10 city staffers and consultants, two members of the City Council, Mayor Rico Medina, Councilmember Laura Davis. And after she left the council, she was replaced by Councilmember Michael Salazar. Two members of the Planning Commission, two members of the Park and Recreation Commission, and two members of the Community Foundation Board. Also attending many of these meetings was Leslie Adamea, the Executive Director of the San Bruno Community Foundation. We provide periodic updates to the City Council, the Planning Commission, the Park and Rec Commission, and the Community Foundation. There were a whole host of internal steering committee meetings and technical meetings that involve Fire Department, Police Department, Park and Recreation Department, Public Works Department, Building Maintenance, IT, and then our Building Construction Division. And so on the screen before you, the list of sort of all of the advisory committee meetings, the City Council updates, the Park and Rec Commission updates, and the Community Foundation updates that took place during this construction phase was not listed as the host of other internal steering committee dates and technical advisory committee meetings. So the aerial that you have before you is today. This is what our Recreation and Aquatic Center, that is in the middle of our city park, looks like there's the existing recreation facility with the Rotary Pavilion in between the Recreation Building and the San Bruno Pool. This is the peaker, this is tomorrow. This is our new aquatic and recreation facility, and the reconfigured City Parkway with additional parking, a relocated pavilion, an indoor and an outdoor pool, and a host of other elements that we will talk about. And so now if Don Merkels is our architect, is in the room, Melissa, I'll turn the presentation over to her that will take the City Council through a number of activities and programs that are within the building, some images that will help orientate you to the building that you are approving for construction tonight. So, Don?
All right. Thank you, Javon. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Don Merkels, Group 4, Principal, and super thrilled to be here tonight with you. It's been a long road, but a road well worth it. Just to give you a quick overview of the project, these are the two floor plans. First floor is on the top, and I'll start up at the very top of the gymnasium. We have a full high school-sized gymnasium that's divisible to two cross courts.
Don, I think we're getting a little feedback from your microphone.
Okay. Let's see, is that any better?
No, it's the same.
Same, okay. Let's see, I can call in or I can set up another microphone in just one minute. So sorry.
While we're waiting, Mayor Medina, I don't know if it's just on mine, but it looks like someone's raising their hand.
Yes, and we're going to let staff do their presentation as normed, and then we'll go to the public. We already have done public comment for items not on the agenda. Thank you. Thank you. There you go.
All right. Does that sound better? Excellent. All right, I see smiling faces, great. Continuing around from the gymnasium, we have three classrooms on the first floor that's supplemented by a conference room up on the second floor, which is then directly adjacent to a community hall. The community hall is the largest gathering space in the facility, it's divisible, and is also adjacent to a catering kitchen. As we move over to the areas designated in green, we have an elevated walking track that goes around the top of the gym. We also have a group exercise room for things like boot camps, yoga classes, line dancing, all sorts of things. And then the larger space up on the top left in green is our fitness area, where we have cardio and weights. Continuing back to the first floor in blue on the left side, we have their year-round aquatics with the natatorium that's supported by locker rooms as well as party rooms. And so we'll take you through the base project on the next slide. So this is a view of the center as you're coming in on City Parkway, and looking at the second floor here with the transparency into the community hall, that is the large space with the catering kitchen. We have three classrooms on the first floor below that. Moving up City Parkway, we have the entry trellis, which goes into this two-story lobby space. Then behind that, on the second floor, we have the group exercise room, all fronted by the public plaza. As you move up the park beyond that natatorium wing, there's stadium seating and steps that take you up as the grade changes and you move into the park. On the next slide, we're moving around, so we're looking back towards Crystal Spring with the building in front of us. It's almost the exact same location as the existing building. The creek is now behind us, and you can see the community hall and classroom wing, the lobby that has a two-story volume with the stair and an elevator that connects up to the second floor. We have the entry trellis that pulls people into the lobby, and behind that, you can see the clear-story windows which provide daylighting into the gymnasium. The group exercise room is still on the second floor, and as you look beyond to the left on this render, you can see the natatorium and the outdoor grass area adjacent to that. On the next slide, we're up on the elevated grass area that's enclosed outside the natatorium, and the natatorium is inside the two-story space. It has a large door that opens up to allow indoor/outdoor connections. Then we have two party rooms directly adjacent to that, that connect both to the indoors and the outdoors for revenue generation, for lifeguard training, things like that. And then also similar that you saw in the gymnasiums, we also have a shed roof that raises up and allows the clear stories to provide natural lighting into the natatorium. As we go to the next slide, looking at the lobby space now, we have two images. The one on the left is as you enter to the lobby and look to the right, the two-story space has the stair that takes you up to the community hall, or directly in front of you is the classrooms. And then to the left of you here, you can see the transparency that connects the lobby to the gymnasium. And then if we were to turn one hundred and eighty degrees and look in the other direction, the image on the right shows us looking back at the reception desk, we can still see the gymnasium on the right. Two-story volume looks up and connects you to the group exercise room on the second floor, and if we look down the hallway, we can actually see the pool lobby beyond. And on the next slide, we've gone up a half a level, and we're at the pool lobby, and you can see the stair that would then take you up to the fitness room, the group X room, and the elevated walking running track that goes around the gymnasium, and also has the connection to the pool here. This provides you access at this lobby level to the locker rooms as well as family changing rooms. The image on the right shows you an indoor view of the natatorium, with the view to in the far corner there is the doors that connect to the outdoor space, and then the two party rooms are on the left. What you can't see in this image is the glazed wall that's up on the backside of us here on this left side, and connects to the fitness room on the second floor, which I'll show you in image in just a minute. On the next slide, we've now gone into the gym, we're looking back towards the lobby. You can see the transparency that I was talking about with the glazing that connects us to the lobby, provides access indoors and out to the lobby from the gym. You can see the elevated walking track that goes around the perimeter. If you look into the middle of the gym, there's a curtain that comes down and divides the court into two half courts, two cross courts, and you can also see the transparency into the group X room that's directly in front of us, the fitness room over to the right, past the track, that actually has then transparency into the natatorium as well. There is bleachers that support the full court or the half court that you can see here on the right as well. And the next slide, so now we're up on the second floor in the fitness room, looking down into the natatorium, you can see how we borrowed daylight from both the gymnasium as well as the natatorium, and provided great views while working out from this space. The pool lobby is over on your left. And then on the next slide, this is an image of the group exercise room that's on the second floor, has views out towards the park, over that public plaza, as well as back down into the entry lobby. And then on the next slide, the community hall. This space is also divisible, and the view on the left is looking back towards the park. As we came in, I pointed out those corner windows. This is the community hall that is located there. It is sized for nice size events, seating from two fifty to three hundred, and then more for assembly. It's directly adjacent to a catering kitchen, as well as for B function use, there is a conference room directly across the hall. Next slide. So now, those were all things that were in the base project, so I'm gonna walk you through all of the items that were also bid alternates, and are, I'll review those one at a time. We've got a summary slide here for you, but since I'm going through them, probably more efficient if we just go through them on the following slides. And we're gonna start with add alternate number one, which is the outdoor pool and deck. And so when we're looking at the image in the base project, there was an outdoor lawn area that supported it or natatorium and the party rooms. In this option, in this alternate, we've added another six lane for an outdoor pool, which complements the indoor six-lane pool, so the full facility would have twelve lanes, as well as a splash pad that has zero entry. You can see how it kind of has an infinity edge to the pool, it's tucked into the hillside, so it really has kind of a low profile from the park side, but really creates this lovely vista from the pool side. And then the cross section that is at the top shows you how the pool comes and is slightly elevated. As we go down from the pool, we have the stadium seating that takes you down, we have the existing redwood tree that we're saving, that's at the pool lobby entry, down to the public plaza, where there's an existing oak tree that we're also saving as part of the project, to the entry trellis and entry plaza there on the far right of that section. On the next slide, another of the alternates is the backup generator and its enclosure. It's located at the utility end of the parking lot, kind of right here up in the corner, where we have our trash enclosure, kind of at the back side of the building tucked up into the hill here. It actually has a portion of it is a retaining wall. In addition to the enclosure that's provided for sound attenuation, weather protection is the emergency generator. The emergency generator, the building already has one, and it would just provide a nice backup opportunity if PG&E, if the power is outage, allow the facility use for ancillary uses in case of emergency, other than just when there's power available. Next slide, the topping slab, so this is actually a plan of the building. The darkest square in the middle is our gymnasium, and then you can see the pool, the natatorium on the left. The area that's covered here in pink is the topping slab, which is an add alternate. We have sealed stained concrete as our floor material in these high-traffic areas, and it is with structural elements that are part of that, like columns and brace frames. And so by having a topping slab over the top of it, we make it be a little bit more easily maintained, more consistent service, aesthetically a little bit nicer, and a little bit better wearing surface. So as we look at the next alternate, this alternate is located in the natatorium, and we have three brace frames in the natatorium, and that's the image that we have on the left. And what we'd be doing with this alternate is accepted, is add additional wood treatment at these brace frames, similar to the treatment that we're using in the lobby, as well as the community hall, and I took a snippet, and you can see that rendering in the middle of the brace frame in the community hall, and how the wood treatment just provides a screen in front of that. It also provides opportunity for a little bit more sound attenuation as well. On the next slide, is two alternates. This is alternate number six, which is an extension of the glazing at the entry trellis, and alternate number seven, which is the soffit at the balcony that's on the community hall. Both of these alternates are really about weather protection and envelope enclosure. So in the base bid for the glazing at the entry trellis, now this is the horizontal glazing that's part of the trellis to protect people as they're coming in and out of the building from raindrops or the foggy mist, we have about five feet, that's part of the base project that's shown there in white, but the addition, the thought is to give a little bit more of a walk-off area, a little bit more of weather protection for people waiting for rides, or people just congregating outside the door, and so it's additional ten feet of glazing to provide weather protection at the entry. And then the soffit at the balcony is really more about envelope enclosure, weatherability, and ease of maintenance. And so this is enclosing the bottom of the balcony with the finished soffit material. And then the next alternate is exterior sun shades. And so, looking at providing additional sun protection, heat gain, energy efficiency to the building, we've looked at the northeast and the southeast elevations to provide exterior sun shades, and the elevations of the building are shown here, both on the top elevation and elevation on the left, and then I've kind of circled the areas that these sun shades would be applied if this alternate is accepted on the rendering perspective that you see here on the bottom right. And then the next alternate. So the next alternate is additional creek restoration. With the realignment of City Parkway, and with the permitting requirements from Regional Water Quality Control Board and the Corps of Engineers, a good portion, what's called Segment A, of that creek realignment is being restored to naturalized creek bed. In addition, the thought is, since we're improving this area, what would the cost be at this time to go ahead and improve that additional area that we're calling Creek Segment B? And so this alternate would extend the restoration of the creek to this additional area as indicated by the arrows here on the diagram. And then, I believe that's the last of our alternates. And then the other thing on your agenda tonight for approval is for geotechnical material testing inspection services. And so, these services, an RFP was issued in January, five proposals received and marched, and based on the evaluation by the city, recommendation is to award that to Nino and, what's her last name? I believe it's Nino. And it's really work that's done during construction, so when the geotech's out there stabilizing the site, they do testing to confirm it's done, as steel is constructed, testing is also done, as well as concrete testing. And so that's an ongoing service that happens throughout construction. And it's Nino and Moore, sorry about that. And I think that concludes my portion of the presentation, and I think I get to hand that over to Park and Rec Director Ann Matola.
Good evening. So I have a permitting update, and really, we are in the home stretch of obtaining our permits to proceed with the work on this project, and have the next slide, please. So as you all know, the city's been working with the Army Corps of Engineers on our Neber clearance, because they have jurisdiction over the creek, does it constitute water in the U.S.? The core scope of review includes the entire project, not just the creek location, and since the project includes demolition of a historic structure that's eligible for the National Register of Historic Places, and since the site is also located near documented archaeological sites, this process also included a Section 106 consultation. The Section 106 consultation involves the State Historic Preservation Officer, SHPO, and they require a submittal of a Historic American Building Survey, or HABs report, that provides how the historic facility will be documented before it's demolished. An archaeological monitoring plan is also required, both the Corps and SHPO, due to the archaeological sensitivity of the area. And this process also required a tribal consultation to discuss the treatment of those archaeological areas. So as I mentioned, we're at the end of consultation, we have everything in agreement in a memorandum of agreement that is being circulated right now to SHPO, and to our tribal representative from the Moosin Band and the Kostanoe Indians, and we expect this process to be finalized in the middle of July. Next, please. And so secondly, as you know, there's an add alter for adding an additional two hundred and thirty feet to the restoration of the creek, and we have that as a bid alternate. So the city is currently working with both the Regional Water Quality Control Board and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, to be prepared to update those two permits that we've already obtained, in the event that we have those add alternates approved this evening as part of the contract. So, I think the good news about this is, we had permit processes with both these agencies, and so all this would take an administrative process, which we could actually finalize by the end of the month. And so that is our update on permits.
Thank you, Director Matola. And I'll take us through the remaining sections of our presentation tonight, and I'll begin with Section Three on the bid award. So, we received six construction bids, total price ranging from just over forty million to just over forty-six million. Unfortunately, in the final due diligence and review of all of the bids, the two lowest bidders, their bid was determined to not meet all of the pre-qualification conditions, thus they cannot be considered, and so we are tonight recommending to award the contract to the third lowest bidder, Laterup Construction. So the city is recommending that all of the add alternates be included in the contract award, given the favorable bid costs, and we have a slide on that in a minute. So the total base bid is thirty-nine point nine million dollars. It's worth noting that one of the city council's criteria for this building, when we completed the schematic design and were going into design development, was include the community row. It was a highly articulated benefit or attribute to the building during the listening campaign, and that was initially not included in that first draft, and the city council said include that. And so that is a part of the base bid for thirty-nine point nine million, as well as all the other aspects that we went over tonight. And then there are the eight alternatives that our architect, Don Merkels, went through. Our add alternate five was deleted, it was an exterior wood treatment that was determined not to be needed. But all of the other eight alternatives that Don went through, we are But all of the other eight alternatives that Don went through, we are recommending to be included for a total construction bid award to late construction, $43,031,000. Total project budget is just under $60 million, $59.9 million. That includes, first and foremost, the $50 million grant from the San Bruno Community Foundation. And the slide above has all of the various elements. Construction and construction contingency is one component, but there's all the other various components of building a building of the magnitude. And so there's our design and engineering costs of $6.4 million, environmental of $82 million, construction management from Griffin Structures, who has been along the journey with us for just over a year now, of $1.2 million, geotechnical waterproofing and commissioning services of just under $500,000, construction again at $43 million, a construction contingency of $4.6 million, the total contingencies that are just over $5 million, that's shown on the subsequent slide. Lara Field Parking Lot Project, the city council will remember that we advanced this project because there is a separation, a geographical separation in the park where this project would occur. It is occurring near Tom Lara Fields to add additional parking and reconfiguring that parking area adjacent to Tom Lara Field, but will also serve this new building. The city council has already awarded that contract, but that is $1.1 million captured in the totality for this project. Traffic signal and city net fiber installation of $850,000. The vast majority at about $750,000 is for a traffic, potentially a traffic signal at Oak and Crystal Springs. It's worth noting, and I know we've talked about this in our prior meetings, but when the traffic analysis was done at Oak and Crystal, the traffic count warrant actually meets a signalized intersection during the AMP peak. Now, this project makes that worse, and so we are including the cost of a traffic signal in the project. It is possible that there may be some other treatments short of a traffic signal. A traffic circle had been talked about, and that will be studied, but we are including the total cost in case we have to go with a traffic signal at that intersection. Temporary space for our recreation department, a part of the overall project budget, at $375,000. The council and the community knows that we have already exited the recreation facility, as well as the pool facility, and are in those temporary locations. F and E, fixtures, furnitures, and equipment of just over $1 million, electronic systems $25,000, utility company connections and other services of $130,000, and then other fees and administrative and the business and costs, $373,000. Brings us to the total of $59.9 million total project, including contingencies. It's worth pointing out that the total project estimate just before going out to bid for this project was $67.4 million. We did have a really good bidding environment, having six proposals, and timing for going out to bid did leverage a very good bidding environment. And so the total project cost is $7.4 million less than the last time we were before you. And so that brings us to that $59.9 million. And so I know that when our bids came in, we were excited about that. So how do we propose to fund the project? What is before you is very similar to what you saw in September and in prior discussions around the potential budget for the facility. The most significant change is there's $7.5 million out of this budget, and we were talking about the need to seek debt to pay overtime for that additional $7 to $8 million that we were projecting. With the current budget, there's no longer the need to do that. So the total project cost, again, the base project plus the add alternates is $59.9 million. There's an additional add alternate for solar that has not yet been bid of an estimated cost of $1.3 million. Currently, we have not identified funds to install the photovoltaic panels on top of the roof. However, all of the conduit and systems to install solar at a later date is included in the base project. And depending on how much solar we decide eventually to put in, we may put in solar panels in some of the parking lots to generate additional capacity to offset the energy cost of the building. We will continue to see grant funds and other funding opportunities. There are government loans for solar, there are entities that will provide upfront costs for solar, and you pay it overtime on your energy savings. And so we will continue to identify a path for solar with the goal of adding it to the project, hopefully before construction is complete. With regard to funding sources, they are listed there, I will go through them. $50 million grant from San Bruno Community Foundation, we will be before the foundation a week from today, on June 15th, for the final award of that grant. Parking lieu fund, so the city council will remember our initial budget called for using the entire balance of our parking lieu fund at $3.1 million. This is now down to $1.7, in alignment with prior direction from the city council to retain funds so we can do other important projects across the city. And so that is leaving a balance of $1.4 in our parking lieu fund. Including, the next item is $4.5 million in a community benefit payment that we have already received from YouTube, the city council and members of the public. We'll remember that we were able to negotiate a community benefit payment for YouTube's project that is currently under construction for two office towers and a subterranean parking structure at 1400 and 1450 Bay Hill. Those are those three pains that are up right now, building that facility. And that $4.5 million payment was paid, and I believe February of this year, but we do have those funds. The next two line items are additional PG&E settlement funds in two various categories. One of them is the settlement from ex parte disclosures. The city entered into a settlement with the city of San Carlos for ex parte disclosures that were found to have occurred between PG&E and the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission. Our portion of that settlement was $1 million, and those are funds that have already been received. The next line item is $900,000 for residual funds from the Crestmore Neighborhood Rebuild Project. When we closed out that project nearly a year ago, there was $900,000 left in that project budget, and we are recommending to apply those to this project. The next two items are water fund and our sewer fund, just under $600,000 for water and just under $500,000 for sewer, so $594,000 and $476,000 respectively. This is to replace the water and sewer lines that are currently within City Parkway. Because we are reconfiguring City Parkway as a part of this project, we are advancing a project that we would have ordinarily done to replace the water and sewer pipelines under that road, and so those are appropriately recommended to come from the water and sewer fund. There is gas tax in Measure A funding of $750,000. This is for the traffic signal that is recommended for Oak and Crystal Springs, again, a funding source that we would ordinarily use for that type of improvement. And again, needs to warrants for additional traffic mitigation measures based on the today number. I will say that that was, that traffic study was done pre-COVID-19, and it was AMP peak when all the school traffic was around, which we know will come back. And the last item in the project budget is $50,000 for the city art fund, and the city council will remember you approved that funding already for relocation of our memorial art structure. In total in the budget, there's over $5 million of contingency than various line items. And so when you take out the San Bruno Community Foundation grant, the city funds that we are using is $10 million, and $5 million of that is contingency. And so the total project of $59 million is roughly $55 million in hard costs with additional contingency. And again, $1.9 million of that is coming from residual PG&E funds and settlement funds, and $4.5 of that $10 million is coming from the YouTube community benefit. Next is our next steps in project schedule. So over these next two weeks, we do have a number of meetings. We met with the Recreation and Aquatic Center Advisory Committee last night. We were meeting here tonight with the city council. On Tuesday, we are at the San Bruno Community Foundation, and on June 16th, we are at the Park and Recreation Commission. And then really will move forward to enter into contract and finalize all the contracting documents and insurance during the month of July, when we receive the permits. And then we anticipate issuing the notice to proceed and had a groundbreaking ceremony in August, so we are very close in this long journey to bring this amazing facility to the community, with an estimated completion in early 2023. And that concludes our, actually, no, there is one more slide. So construction management, I know that this is important for the city council, and a reason why we brought on our construction manager, so they can be with us as we were developing the construction documents, so they could really envision and know the project that we were designing, and not just coming on board and reading plans, and then inspecting and managing the project based on those plans. And so the tax items for Griffin Structures are on the screen, and you have the mass cost and budget management, schedule management, document management, some middles, financial controls, change or management, review and approval of all of those change orders that will have to come to the city council. Communication to site neighbors and stakeholders, and there will be a process for individuals in the community and the city council to contact our project manager if there are any concerns with regard to instruction, both weekly and monthly reports, owner, architect, and contractor, weekly meetings, OAC is the industry term, and special contractor and consultant meetings to be sure that everything stays on track. Progress reports to key stakeholders, including the city council, coordination with our geotechnical testing and inspection services, review of the progress payment and pay applications for all the various labor unions that will be working on the site, lean releases, quality control and quality assurance services, claim mitigation and avoidance, commissioning, startup, testing of equipment, training, OM manuals, warranties, all that stuff that we're going to need in perpetuity, and then the closeout and punch list. And so Griffin Structures is here tonight and able to answer any questions that the city council may have. And actually, the action that we have before the city council, this is the same slide that you saw before, there are five items. Design and recreation of the aquatic and recreation center budget, authorization for the city manager to execute the construction contract, authorization to execute the contract for geotechnical testing and inspection, approving the project contingency, and approving the total project budget. This budget is also included in the city council's, in the proposed budget for fiscal year 2122, that will be formally adopted by the city council on June 22nd of this year. And so with that, I will conclude. Alternative actions, we can, of course, reject all bids and direct staff to re-advertise the project. This, of course, will delay the project and almost certainly result higher costs, or we can not award the construction contract and not move forward with the project. And so that concludes the step presentation. We are here again to answer any questions. Thank you, city council. Thank you to our entire team, staff, consultants that have got us to this point, and we're looking forward to opening day. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. We'll allow you to get seated, maybe get some water, and take a moment. So at this time, members of the public that wish to have comments, now would be the time to please raise your virtual hand, and then we'll go ahead and call on you, and then we're going to bring it back to the city council for questions on the presentation. I see we have a one speaker, and so city clerk, if you'd be still kind.
Yes, Paul Wapinski.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, Paul, whenever you're ready.
Right. In the last couple of months, the cost of building materials and labor skyrocketed, and I'm just wondering if this budget is even realistic now with the cost? And it's got 11% contingency, but just lumber itself has gone up 300%. And what's the plan if we do go over the $59 million? Where does that money come from? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Seeing no other speakers. So with that, we will bring it now and leave it with the city council. Public comment is concluded, we'll come back to the city council, and if you could let me know if you have questions of the report, if you could raise the virtual hand or whatever, and I'll, we'll start to call on folks. Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, could staff answer that first question? Because that's a really good question. Are we going to take all questions, or how are we going to do this?
Why don't you go ahead and include it in your question?
Okay.
And then we'll go with your questions if we can.
So my first question is, for this project, it includes all the traffic control that's going to be on the site? Is the street, City Parkway, going to be closed? What's the plan? If that can be shared at this time?
Sure. The detail that cannot be shared at this time, there will be a detailed construction schedule. Absolutely, there will be times where City Parkway is closed. When we have a kickoff meeting with the project and get into the detailed construction schedules, they absolutely know the thoroughfare that is City Parkway, and we intend to keep that open for as much as possible, and hopefully, when we have to close it, close it intermittently.
And the traffic control is included in the contract bid?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Looking at the schedule, we'll hear a detailed schedule, but it was provided, that's probably like the number one question that I've received, is when is it going to start and when is it going to be ready? So I was wondering if we could hear a little bit about that? One of the slides did show, seems like a pretty aggressive schedule to get it done in 18 to 20 months, it looks like from that one slide?
Yeah. Construction has always been a 22-month construction schedule, but I'll have our architect, Don, address that actually pop on the.
Okay. The, our construction management includes the community notifications? Will there be a site website that people could kind of check in on? And for some of the larger construction projects, they generally put a camera up that people can kind of take a look at? Is that going to be something that we've thought about? The website, and then kind of, that's probably the primary question, of having a dedicated website that people can kind of check in on how things are going?
So the answer to both of those is yes, and I think what you're referring to is the lovely time lapse cameras that everyone likes for these big construction projects. And yes, we are working to provide time lapse camera. We are actually looking at doing that because we have some people that are tech savvy, we are looking at running that in-house. We did receive a bid for doing that and decided to not use that outside bid, but do it in-house. And so we're still working out the details, but yes, there is the plan to have that hosted and have the time lapse camera.
Okay. For the water and sewer work that was identified in the summary, is this contractor overseeing that as the prime contractor, or is that something later?
It is included in the later up bid, and so they will It is included in the late rock bid and so they will be overseeing it. I honestly cannot tell you if that is going to be done by us or not right now, but I do know that it is included with their base project bid of 39 million.
Currently, we are being, the council's being asked to approve the entire project, which includes that generator, that backup generator. Maybe I'm not recalling the option for, for a solar backup. Is it, is it the solar, is too much up in the air at this time? Or is it also that the energy requirement sizing of that to run the facility? Just interested in hearing, hearing about that again.
Absolutely, Vice Mayor Medina. Lots of meetings and analysis on that and I am totally unqualified. So I'm going to turn it over to our architect who led that base of the project.
All right. Audio's on? Yeah. So for the photovoltaics, and we did actually look at having a battery backup instead of the emergency generator. And unfortunately, right now, the batteries for the solar are not such that they are available or cost effective for us to use as a backup for our building. The building is definitely PV ready and once photovoltaics are installed, it will definitely offset the energy usage. One of the things we're hoping that's going to happen in the future is that enclosure where the emergency generator is actually would be a great location to cite those batteries once they become available. That technology is evolving very quickly. And when we say quickly, so five to 10 years out, they may be able to be replacing that emergency generator with battery backups. Is that your assumption to answer?
Right. I'm, it, I guess that that is going to be the, that is the answer. And I'm hoping that we find some way to get that 1.3 million, whether it be from low interest loans or otherwise as, as we move forward. Those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton.
So I have a question about bid alternate one, the outdoor pool and deck, which I'm absolutely in, in favor of as with the other, the other seven alternates. In the renderings for this, the fencing around it is, looks to, looks to be waist high, which obviously is not true for safety reasons. So is a, is a full height fence part of the included price? And I'm assuming yes, but the more important question is have the, like, what are the aesthetics of that fence? Because that, you know, it being at the front of the building, it have a big impact on the overall aesthetics of the facility.
So, so Don, will you, will you answer that and talk about the hillside?
I would love to. And so if you have the PowerPoint available, council member, and you go to slide 18, you'll see that the height of the fence on the pool side is 42 inches. And so that is height sufficient to keep people in safely. But because of that grade change that I talked about as you go up the site, from the park side, we actually have over six feet of height and it actually gets taller as you go up. It's nicely landscaped. But it actually, how we've tucked it into the hill and really minimized the aesthetic of having a great big ugly six-foot fence as this kind of ugly barrier, we're using that hillside and tucking it in. And part of the retaining wall is then in front and then our fence six sets on top of the retaining wall. And we've been very carefully how we've detailed that so there's no ledge or anything for anybody to climb up on as well. So I give a lot of credit to our mating landscape architect to come up with this concept.
That's great. That's really, really great. The, the fence around our current pool is not pleasing and also the, that's a great alternative. Thank you. I'll probably have questions later, but I'm good for now, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, council member. Other questions from colleagues? I have not seen any other questions from council members on the staff report, then let's see if there are comments from council. Oh, if, go ahead, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, the question from the public on the cost. And then one other question that I, I have is, does this include security cameras, alarms for the facility for this?
Security cameras and alarms, surveillance is included, yes. We work closely with your police department to come up with the specifications and locations for all the security equipment. And actually, there is actually a satellite police officer's office located in the building as well.
And I think the second one was the circling back on the cost of materials.
So, so absolutely, the cost of materials have gone up since our bids, well, since we received the bids. We have test base with the contractor and they are standing by their bid price and are excited about moving forward with the project. There is a contingency and when you're building a building, absolutely, there will, there, there may be things. We feel comfortable in the contingency in the project. If something happens and the, the cost escalates, we will, we will have to address that. You know, that's, that's always a risk in, in construction. But we are moving forward. We do have valid bids. We know that there has been a change in commodity pricing. We've talked to the contractor about that and we feel that contingency is sufficient to get through the project. And it's worth noting that our construction management purpose currently working on other community related projects in the area. And so this navigating, those issues, absolutely.
Now, since questions are concluded, comments from council. Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I actually have questions. I just didn't get to my hand raising in time.
Okay.
So I'll just direct them as I go through them. The first one is, in the, we previously talked about the potential of making the pool wider. I think this is something I've brought up for at least a year and a half because we've had community members want a pool that's going to ensure that there's ability to have like, I guess, water below competitions is one of the requests I've had from a number of residents, actually. And then I had another resident say that the size of the pool is not, you know, like your average pool for some kind of another tournament. Being, I'm not a swimmer myself, but being that I have brought it up to city manager multiple, multiple occasions and that we're being asked to approve the design tonight, what is the possibility of changing that in the future as we go through this?
Absolutely. Councilmember Mason, you have mentioned that and the design of the pool was a subject of much debate, much cost cutting and final decisions when we develop the construction documents. So what is currently designed in the pool is a year-round indoor six-lane pool with a mirror, nearly mirrored six-lane outdoor pool as well as a zero-deck pool outside that with a spray feature for, for young kids. And that zero debt does about, is a part of the ADA access as well as child safety in the pool. The, the conversations around potentially making the pool larger are really tooth bold. It's one, going from six lanes outdoor to eight lanes outdoor, potentially for collegiate meets and additionally having additional depth for things like water polo tournaments. Should the city decide to do one or both of those, there is a process that we could do with a changeler that will certainly have a cost implication. And we can do that after the award of the contract and have those conversations. And connected to both of those conversations is a in-depth analysis and understanding on the business plan and operational model for the pool as well as competing uses for the pool and other costs. Because there's a cost of sort of adding more water and adding more depth, but then there are other costs for the project that escalate as you do change orders. So we can absolutely have that conversation. I think staff has done some initial analysis with the architect on that point to potentially expand the outdoor pool. I think council and the public will remember that there was a point in this project where we didn't think we would be able to afford it out. And we made a number of strategic decisions to, to have a financially viable project. But, you know, we, we can absolutely, after this phase, continue to have those conversations about a potential change order. But it should really be informed on the potential users for that expansion, what revenue that would generate and what other users that may push out by having that expanded use. And so what, what the pool is currently designed for is not collegiate meets, which is really what you need, I understand you need those eight lanes for. But, you know, I think that, I should actually pause right now because I'm getting past my debt of four dollars and turn it over to our, our community services director for any closing comments on this. But just to suffice to say, it's, it's not a forced stall thing. We can continue to have those conversations at the change order.
And I would just echo that it does go hand in hand with the competition and how we will balance the use of the facility, the pools against revenue models and the different revenue centers within the facility. So as we move forward, the decision will be comprised with, I think, business operations but not particularly part of the facility.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to be clear that it's not just coming up now out of nowhere. So I hope that this conversation has already started, which it sounds like it has. And I think it's something that we should consider because once it's built, it's going to be a lot harder to make those changes later and a lot more expensive as well. So do we, just so that, before I leave that topic, is that something that we would, when we vote on this, we would say this is something we want to ensure that is, continues to be considered or we just wait for some kind of a report back on that topic?
You know, I'd say it's already on staff's work program and we will schedule that a study section with the City Council about that at a later date. You know, I think probably in the August, September timeframe would be sufficient for that and that's what we'll talk about. So getting through the contractor board and the permitting with the facility as designed is actually really quite important. And then talking about potential change orders subsequent to that.
Okay, okay. I just say it because I, I believe it would be a very expensive change order. So I had a question about bleachers. How, how many people will be able to actually sit inside that indoor pool space?
Don, will you take that?
Yeah. So in the indoor pool space, we've actually have room for two tilt-up roll bleachers, which are three high. And they can fit over there next to the glazing that opens up out to the grass area or where the potential pool alternate could locate. Additionally, the party rooms are also used for viewing spaces for parents for swim lessons and things like that. And then also the pool lobby looks right into the natatorium as well. The concept, if there was pool, school, high school meets there, was that the roll-up door could open up and the teams could set up their camps out on the lawn area outside that roll-up deck. And so even if that outdoor pool didn't come along, the six lanes inside are set up with the timing equipment as well as the outdoor lanes as well for more like high school meets that had been discussed and locations for where the team meets would set as well.
So, so that, the tilt-up roll bleachers, about how many people would that seat? I don't know.
That's okay. I think it's 18 inches, six feet. Let me just do, probably about 30 to 40 on the bleachers and then additional deck space if needed, but for bleacher seating, that's what could be accommodated there on the inside.
Okay, great. Thank you. This question is probably for, I would say, the contractor, if the contractor is available?
Why don't we ask the, the question and then we'll see who's best or if it's done or?
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. The first one is around the supplies. What is the plan to ensure that your supplies are cleaned every night, that we leave the area tidy? And how would you respond to the resident concerns that are raised?
I think that question is best for our construction manager, George. So Melissa, I don't see George Sannan in the room. Can you bring him in the room, please? He's, he's an attendee. Thank you. And if there is a representative from the construction firm, please feel free to wave your hand and come in the room.
And he's been brought in.
Mr. Sannan, you're muted.
I thought I, I thought I was unmuted myself. I apologize. Good evening.
Thank you.
I did, I did hear your question. So the answer is that we strive to work with the contractor to keep the facility neat and tidy, basically, not only the interior, but the exterior, which mostly affects all of the constituents and everyone, pedestrians that pass by, as well as the streets. In all of the cases where we have materials such as concrete that would create additional debris on the streets and everything, we require that they sweep the street with mechanical sweepers and we also literally wash the tires of the trucks that leave the facility to prevent any leftovers from concrete or other dust or sand, et cetera, to go into the, into the streets. We also wet continuously all of the soils, especially we have, as you know well, a very windy area. So we continuously wet the area so the dust is, is not flying all over the neighborhood.
Great, thank you. And what, any plan for residents who may express complaints about noise or about dirt or anything that comes with the construction? What's been your experience with that in the past and how have you handled it?
Well, the city manager mentioned earlier, we were actually building a nearby community center for the city of Burlingame. And we plan to do exactly the same thing, a replica of what we are doing for the city of Burlingame, which is basically having a helpline that is available to the public, not only via the city website, but also posted on the fences of the construction site. That helpline can be accessed by anyone, neighbors, anyone that has a concern, complaint or a question. And I regularly check those messages and answer them directly. Provide assurances that the constituents are being heard. And if it's anything that can be mitigated immediately, I immediately act upon it, whether it is by the general contractor or working along with the city if it's outside my jurisdiction.
Thank you. The next one is, just, and maybe the last one for you, Mr. Sannan, and it's around just the local hiring. Will, will there be any plan if positions or subcontracting is available to attempt at least to hire locally as much as possible?
Well, the contractor already submitted a very comprehensive list of Well, the contractor already submitted a very comprehensive list of contractors that are all union contractors. Within those, there would be some apprentice level, entry-level positions. And we'll coordinate with the contractor if they have the capability of bringing some local folks and train them or make them learn certain aspects of construction that they might be interested in. There's a large variety of fields where people can participate. We'll work with them.
That would be wonderful. Thank you. My next question is for, let me see, for our city manager. And that's around the, what are the city controls? It looks like on the staff report that the construction manager is going to handle quite a bit of the relationship with the contractor. And so I'm wondering, what is the city's role going to be? Where are the checks and balances on the construction manager as well as the contractor?
So there will be a city staff person assigned to oversee the construction in a contract, as well as there is the client department, the community services director. And so we have actually transitioned our management of this project many different times, depending on the phases. And as we enter the construction phase, this really becomes more of a public works project. Whereas before, when we were in design, it was really led by the client department. So our contractor's contract is...
Okay, thank you. I can play it.
Our contractor's contract is with, it's held with our public works department and it will be our public works director that is chiefly responsible for that. At this moment, our interim public works director, Amon Ritchie, who's also our city engineer, will have oversight of the construction contract.
Okay, thank you. I'm curious to know why the contingency is 11% and not the, what I believe is the typical 5% to 10%?
Sure. So that 11% is the construction contingency only. There's actually in the sort of detailed cost model, there's contingency in every line item. And so the overall remaining contingency is just over $5 million. Roughly 10% is where we want it to land initially. But realizing the additional risks with everything that's going on out with material pricing as well as just the busyness of construction, we thought it was prudent to increase it to 11. And there's honestly no magic and I think it's 11.7. We wanted to make sure that we at least had a 10% contingency. And then when we went through the final budget analysis, there were some additional funds that we, when you do the final math, it's 11.4%.
So is there anything wrong with the city requesting a 10% contingency? And then, and this is probably a question for our city attorney, but requesting a 10% contingency and anything over 10% has to come back to the council for approval?
It's important to note that any use of the contingency for construction has to come back to the city council. And so your financial appropriation is just that. It's appropriating the money to the project. But what you're authorizing the city manager to sign is the contract for Griffin for $43,031, $43,031,000. So any change order that may be needed over that is going to have to come to the city council approval.
Okay, great. That's comforting. I did have a question just as when I look at the current, the state of reopening. And I know the contractor, I did go to your website and I heard what you just said about Burlingame. I'm curious to know though, given where we are with COVID, if you are up to date on your existing contracts to make sure that that doesn't then impact the contract that we have before us tonight?
So council member Mason, I do not believe that there is a representative from Lathrop Construction here tonight, but there is a representative from Reconstruction, our construction manager, that is here tonight. And so George, I know you're working on a number of projects and you can talk about Burlingame. And so, George, can I toss that question to you?
Sure. Can I get that question repeated, please?
Yeah, so the question was regarding Lathrop Construction and whether, given where we are with COVID and that a lot is reopening, people are going back to work, are there any projects that you're behind on now that may impact this particular construction project start date?
No, as a matter of fact, we, as I mentioned earlier, are currently working on the community center for the city of Burlingame, which incidentally and appropriately is also being designed by Group Four Architects. That project is on schedule, as actually I can say, a little bit ahead of schedule in spite of all of the problems that have been created by the COVID outbreak. So I don't foresee any conditions that would impede the proper flow of construction once the notification to proceed is issued for that.
Okay. And so city manager, did you just say nobody's here from Lathrop?
George, can I name someone?
Actually, we have someone raising their hand.
Within the public, if the city member can see that?
I brought it. You brought it.
Okay. I guess my next question is just a request that, similar to what we've had with COVID, given that, you know, there's a vested interest, I think, by everybody to have this project done on time and within budget. I would like to request a monthly progress report to the council. It doesn't have to be a long presentation. It could be a five to 10-minute presentation, just stating that, you know, we are on track to finish on time, we're on budget to finish on time. If there's any, you know, hiccups that come up, that it be reported at that time and that the contractor, Lathrop, be available for any questions that may arise from the public. So a large contract for our city and I think it's really important that we're as transparent as possible about the progress of the project and that we are all accountable because all of this money that's being used is really, I think that we all have a responsibility to the public to ensure that it's being used appropriately and within our timeline set. Is that, any other questions on that from the city manager?
And before you answer, can you also explain how that's tying into what you saw in the PowerPoint presentation about weekly and monthly reports? Because that was in there and maybe that needs just to be clarified so we understand.
So absolutely, there are already been monthly reports to the city council. Council member Mason, what I believe I also hear you requesting is a standing item at one of our two regular city council meetings for a project update and also to have a representative from the construction firm present to answer questions on that item from any members of the public. I, you know, why don't I first allow the representative from the contractors to answer that question? But it is a typical request and something that was not included in the bid.
Okay, thank you. My name is Rick Martelaro. I'm president of Lathrop Construction. And thank you for having me. It's been interesting listening and as stated, we're very engaged and involved in the project. We have been for some time and looking forward to an approval. Council member Mason, we can be available. We interact quite frequently on a lot of our projects with community neighborhoods. We know that when we come in, we're making a lot of dirt and noise. We also appreciate the fact that the public in particular has supported this project. And so we're very sensitive to that. So as needed, in coordination with George and the city, we can be available. We like doing that. We like communicating well. We do sometimes build schools right in the middle of the homes and as a result of some of the tactics that we implement and trying to be good neighbors and recognizing that we're infringing on them for a couple of years, they actually turn out being friendly and watching the projects for us. And so, but it's earned. It's not something that is expected. And we try to keep them informed and we would be working closely with Griffin and the city in keeping them informed as what's going on because we know it's a very important project for you guys.
Okay, great. Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you guys.
I'm almost done. I guess just in regard to the contract. And I do believe this is maybe a city attorney question, but two questions. One is in regards to materials, if there's any theft of materials, just who the responsible party is. And then the second part of the question is in regards to any going over the contracted, what the punitive measures are on the contractor for every day that goes past the deadline.
City manager?
Sure. I'll talk to the punitive measures to the city attorney, Mark Sapparato. But I raised my hand because I just, I want to end this with appropriate expectations. And so there was a request from council member Mason to have the contractor present at one of our monthly city council meetings. And, you know, I've been doing this for a while and I know the cost to have people attend our council meetings. And so if I can, I just want to talk to the contractor because I don't want that to be in the final analysis, a change order for the cost to attend one council meeting a month and have the contractor sitting through our public comment for an item when they may or may not be asked a question. And so just respectfully, I understand the request, but let us work with the contractor, work with the project manager to identify an appropriate reporting structure to the city council or report out to the city council that does not involve additional costs or unnecessary additional costs with that.
Yeah, and just to be clear, we're approving a contract essentially, right? And so that contract has been or is being negotiated. And I don't think that for a $43 million contract, there should be an extra cost to be present to report out to the public for a 22-month period. And so I do want to just be very clear about that.
Absolutely. The contract template though was attached to the bid. And with these processes, anything that's additional typically comes with additional costs. I just don't want to leave this conversation with expectation that that's going to occur when we haven't had those conversations on, will that be prodominal or will that be at an added cost and then we can make that value decision on what's the appropriate way to give the city council inform?
City attorney?
So, council member Mason, I don't have the, all of the contract documents immediately in front of me, so I can't answer that question right now. It's possible that the folks at Griffin might know the answer to that question, having through the contract perhaps more recently than I have, or they may have it up on their screen. If not, we can provide that answer for you at a later time.
Yes, go ahead, George.
We provide as part of our integrated services, monthly reports that are fully comprehensive, including cost estimates, the advance of the project. I worked with the contractor, with the superintendent and the project manager, creating those reports. They include photographs. They include all of the financial progress of the project. So, and they are distributed in a very timely way. So they are directed to whoever it's going to be. If it's the director of public works, who in turn will disseminate to all of you council members and anyone else that has stake on the project.
Mayor, it appears that John Hughes from Griffin has also raised his hand. He may have some information regarding the last question.
Mr. Hughes, did you want to add anything? You're muted. Yes, I just wanted to add, I wanted to answer council members, Medina Mason's question. Currently, the contract calls for $5,000 per day of liquidated damages should the contractor fail to meet the schedule.
Okay, great. Thank you. That is what I was looking for. And then I think the last, just really the last question is around the communication from the city. What is the communication plan at this time for the surrounding community after tonight's meeting to notify them that a contract has been entered into? The timeline of construction and about this helpline that is being set up for any residents who have questions?
Sure. So to be clear, after tonight, we will not immediately enter into contract. We do have a deadline within June to enter into contract. We will meet that deadline. The action tonight is authorized by the city manager to do that. And then we have, again, the meeting with the foundation for the final of the $50 million contract. That will be next Tuesday. The communications to the neighborhood, there will absolutely be a mailing to the neighborhood prior to the start of construction. As the slide where we talked about the duties of Griffin Structure, our construction manager, their direct contact information will be there for a direct person for the city's construction manager as well as a representative from the construction firm. And then as we talked about within the scope of the work that Griffin will do, it will be that regular interface to address any concerns that may come after a construction from the city. They are the individuals that we're hiring to manage that and work directly with the contractor to resolve those issues as soon as they come up. So frankly, council doesn't get calls, right, when there's an issue with a construction contract? There will be signs posted at the job site. If there's an issue, contact this person. And the expectation certainly is that those will, the majority of them will be resolved and never reach the city council or the city manager, which is commonplace. And we brought on Griffin Structures, Griffin Structures that will be managing that contract to see that that occurs.
Great, thank you. And yeah, I think as far as just a comment, since we're going into comments, you know, the requests that I've made about these public reporting or the public reporting as a monthly request, it's not that it's, you know, to be heard before the council. I think if we wanted that, we could just have a private meeting. It's really that this is a project the city is very excited about. And like many government agencies, there's always this feeling of we're going to, you know, it's going to take too long or it's going to be delayed. And I think it's really important that these conversations be had in public and that the contractor, the city, all of our consultants are all being held accountable together. Because at the end of the day, if we're not working together, this project's not going to get done. And I really want to compliment Don, who has been kind of the face of this since the beginning. I remember seeing you at some original meetings. I think you've just done an excellent job facilitating these meetings, facilitating and coordinating a lot of different parties. And I really look forward to continuing to hear about the project and seeing it moving forward. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Vice, I apologize. Council member Salazar, sorry, Mr. Vice.
Thank you. So definitely a great project.
Thank you. So definitely a great project and a long time coming. We've been waiting a long time for this. And my concern, I have concerns and they're mostly around the budget. I mean, this one project is bigger than our general fund. And I know we've had familiarity with the numbers and the numbers have gone up, they've come down. It's been like a roller coaster as we go through the process. And in the end, it's come into something that's doable. But the one question I had, and I know at one time we had talked about when the price tag was a lot bigger, we talked about issuing a bond to make up the difference. And where I'm looking at where the money's coming from right now and conversations that we've had as a council around protecting specific funds, I'm wondering if that's still an option for the city's contribution to this project? And, you know, specifically, I'm talking about, you know, we're taking money out of streets. We're taking it out of sewer. We're taking it out of water. I understand that those are components of this. But up until, you know, we decided we were pulling the trigger on this, there were projects that were counting on those dollars. The entire benefit from Bay Hill is going into this. But there are other projects out there that have been waiting for money. You know, and I'm looking at things that are in our capital plant. We have streetlights that are rusting away, RO circuits that need to be addressed and no available funding for those. And so when, you know, we look at building this wonderful project, I agree that we need to find money where it can be. But I feel that it may be in some cases coming at the expense of other critical infrastructure needs. And so that's where I struggle, not with the project itself, but with where we're pulling funds from. And then hearing tonight, there are already discussions about change orders. That is concerning me because, you know, it's already a hard pill to swallow that, you know, in these economic times, you know, we're going to expend these amount of funds, but then that could potentially grow. That's definitely a concern to me. You know, $5 to $10 million may seem small in comparison to the project. During the last election cycle, I spent most of my time explaining to the public why the city had an $8 million shortfall. So it's not completely insignificant to say that it's, you know, it may be a bargain for this project, but it's not an insignificant amount of money that's coming out of other projects. And so I would suggest that we potentially still look at doing a bond to do this. That bond could be paid back, still tied to the department, funds coming from that department to pay it back and sort of keeping things isolated way along. And that's pretty much it. I mean, I do intend to support the project in issuing the contract. I want to see this move forward. I just want to make sure that we're eyes wide open and not so fascinated by this amazing project that we forget that we are responsible for a lot more than just this.
Okay, council member, city manager, did you have something you wanted to say?
Sure. Let me sort of step through a number of questions there. I know there were a number of statements I want to address, but I think there were a number of questions there. But first, council member Salazar mentioned that this is the entire community benefit from YouTube. I just want to clarify, I know that council member knows this, but I want to clarify for the members and the public. It is a community benefit payment, the 4.5 million from the current YouTube project that is under construction. That is not connected to the other YouTube campus expansion that we have been talking about, which is the Bay Hill specific plan. That has a separate community benefit package and that will be going before the city council later this year. And so that has a more significant community benefit package attached to it. With regard to utilizing other funds and the city's challenges, absolutely. The city of San Bruno has had fiscal challenges for several decades. And the current facilities that we're replacing were built in the 50s. And when we did the seismic analysis on the current recreation facility, it was not salvageable and there are significant seismic issues with that facility. And so in the $60 million project budget, 50 million of that is coming from the community foundation. And so that leaves the $10 million from various city funds. Of that 10 million, 5 million is contingency. And so with regard to the other question, which is, well, can we bond for that additional cost above the $50 million grant from the foundation? We can continue to look at that. What we know from the budget that is before you is as we come out of COVID-19, the ability for excess revenue to pay that service is not necessarily there. When we were looking at a potentially $8 million bond to cover a $68 million project, we're potentially going to have to look at using measure G, at least in the short term, to pay that annual debt service. And so should the city council want to direct staff to continue to look at bond financing? We can certainly do that. But given where our budget is today, paying in that debt service will either, I think, really means one or two things in the short term. Which is we either cut operations to have revenue to pay that debt service, or we utilize measure G to pay that debt service in the short term. With regard to the use of other funds, certainly water and sewer have fund balances that can sustain the project budget that is aligned to those. We did have a question from council member Medina that came in just before the meeting on what are all of the fund balances of funds that are in the project budget? I did just receive the answer to that. We can talk about that. And I can pull that up if council would like to know all those fund balances. What I would say is the project budget that you have before you is also included in the proposed budget. So it's included in all of the proposed CIP projects and final fund balance allocations. Because really, the only thing that's changed about budget in the last six months is that it's 7.4 billion dollars less and we reduced the parting loo money from 3 million down to 1.7. And so we are able to fund this project with the resources that we have within our control right now, with that receipt of the $50 million from the community foundation. And again, of the 10 million that come in from city funds, 5 million of that is contingency. And so the true city funds that are being brought to bear on replacing these two very aging facilities, that we're here because of the community listening campaign to replace them.
Council member Salazar?
Thank you. And so just to continue, yeah, it is true that there will be more money coming from the Bay Hill project. But what we know that has been admitted, what we can actually, what's ours to spend right now is this that we're looking at. So, you know, I've been bit before by trying to count my chickens before they all hatch. So the other thing I wanted to also mention, just in terms of the contingency costs, I believe in response to council member Mason's question, it was stated that all contingency expenses come back to council. But unless I'm completely wrong, that has not been my experience. And almost every construction project that I've seen has used at least some portion of its contingency and it has never come back to the council for approval. I know change orders will come back to us and that's appropriate. But I don't believe I've ever seen anything come back and ask us, do we approve the contingency? Once it's approved, it normally gets used as needed. And when you're sticking shovels in the ground, you're always going to uncover something and it's probably going to get used. So to say, yeah, it's only 5 million, the 5 million is only contingency, I'm not going to count on that not getting spent. And, you know, I think council member Mason made some really valid points around what the optics are around this going forward. I was very much in favor of having the committee, the subcommittee that's existed. I've only been on it now for this year and I think we had two meetings. And it really didn't meet the level of expectation that I had around what would be presented and what that group would be involved in. And I know the design moved a little slower, but as we start getting into the construction and the dollars start getting spent, I really feel we need the level of oversight. And we're going to be counting on our construction manager to bring us the reports. We saw the same thing happen with the Glenview restitution, the rebuilt reconstruction project, excuse me, the reconstruction project. We did get regular updates, but even then, we far exceeded the budget. There were a lot of change orders that came in. And in the end, I feel that we failed the neighborhood in providing everything that we had committed to. So I don't want to see that happen again, if we can at all help it. So those are comments.
Thank you, council member. And for myself, it's important to me too that there is that communication and that's why it's already placed in their weekly and monthly reports. So I don't want to duplicate efforts. I just want to have it so that it's available to folks. So, you know, it could be part of the packet or part of the agenda, so it's always online. So it is always available. Also, my expectation would be that, you know, we don't want to wait a month to get news. We want any concerns that residents or neighbors have be addressed quickly and expeditiously. And so it could be followed up as to, you know, kind of a highlight of what questions have arisen, what concerns might they have. We could be updated on that too. But I do want to see that something comes back. I don't know if it has to be, and city manager, I appreciate you saying, setting the expectation so that it's not, I think, automatic. But there are ways, and I don't want to duplicate, we're going to get monthly and weekly reports or however it's being facilitated. I think that's what we need to know. What is the process going to be? Where is it going to be available? How will it be available? How can interested people who really have a love and passion and it's in their backyard and it's going to be for their community, where can they go? Let's make it simple. Let's make it easy. Let's make it user-friendly. And I'm also with council member Salazar in the sense of my understanding too is once we release the contract because of its completion, then we will see the change orders within the document, which comes back to council. There are some elements and that's where we'll start to see some of those things that have happened. Some are unforeseeable, right? You start to dig down and all of a sudden, wow, that wasn't listed, that wasn't there. There's no record of it. God knows this city has experienced that almost 11 years ago. So anyway, I, you know, I am obviously in favor of the project and I think a community is impatient and been waiting. I'm going to stop going so that we can try to get to the vice mayor, the city manager, and then see if there's any action from them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I wanted to thank staff and all of our consultants working on this project. It's a long time coming. It's as councilman Salazar said, this one project is bigger than our general fund. This project is bigger than anything that we've done in many, many years. We built the neighborhood for 50 million or so, right? But this is one single project. So I want to speak in support of having a monthly update, something short, a standing, it can be the first meeting of the month or it can be the last meeting of the month, doesn't matter. This project is so important that we get an update and timely updates. And so monthly, I think, is reasonable, you know, five minutes or less. If it needs to be more than that, then hopefully, hopefully it won't. Hopefully, everything's going to go smooth. But in construction, there's always something that comes up. One other thing, as I was hearing the other questions, is for Griffin doing the construction management, it would be great if they maintained the log of the complaints that they, or issues that they are dealing with. It'd be good to see what those are. It doesn't have to come, preferable not to come to the council every single time there's an issue, but the log would be great if they were able to share that with staff and with the council to see what are the issues over there. So I am in support of this. As for the funding and potential bonding, I think that as we move forward, I think we have a capable city manager that will be able to identify potential funds as they come about. And we'll be talking with the San Bruno Community Foundation here, approving their budget here, if that's not tomorrow, I think, from the agenda I received. But, and that for the city manager, that it could be an option of asking the San Bruno Community Foundation to bring on additional funding if it's needed. The 50 million was decided, that number was from eight years ago, before we even had prices on this. So I look forward to voting and approving this and I think we're ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. I'm sorry, council member Hamilton?
No problem. So I'll be fast because I know we're running out of time. Just because I didn't say any comments earlier, I am also very much in favor of this and look forward to voting to adopt this resolution tonight. I am also in favor of regular updates. I do hear and have the same concerns about, you know, having, you know, pay to have staff or representatives from the construction companies sit through our meetings. But we can be creative with that. There's absolutely no reason that that one monthly update, you know, at one of our meetings can't be item number three right after the pledge. To get right to it, get it done, get it over with, and then we get into our regular business. We have flexibility in how we set up our meetings to mitigate that. So I just wanted to share my support for the whole project and my support for the idea of having those regular updates.
Yeah, and I think, just to, thank you, council member. City manager has already said, please allow me the opportunity, he's heard all of us, I think in one way or another, to talk, work, and then let us know. So I think he knows that, but I do want him that opportunity that he already asked us. So again, they're getting reports as well. Let's not duplicate efforts. Let's streamline the process. All right, council members, I appreciate it, staff, thank you. And to all of our guests that are here that have been working with us on this, to get to this phase. Council member Salazar? Any answers, sir?
Yes, we have a resolution in front of us. I was going to make the motion to introduce the resolution of its.
I saw your mic go on, so that's why I said, go ahead, sir.
Okay. So with that then, I will introduce the resolution approving the design of the center, authorizing the city manager to execute the construction contract with Lathrop, approving a construction contingency of 4.6 million, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Nino and Moore for the geotechnical portion, and approving a total project budget not to exceed, oh, I'm sorry, let's see where it was, total project budget of $59,980,220.
Thank you for reading that for the record. Is there, wow, all right, Mr. Vice Mayor, roll call please, the city clerk.
Council member Hamilton?
Aye.
Council member Mason?
Aye.
Council member Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Thank you, council. Thank you, staff. Thank you to all the others, George, John, Don. Thank you all, Rick, for being here. With that said, we are going to adjourn to the next. With that said, uh, we are going to adjourn to the next regular City Council meeting, um, which I will see you in about, uh, several minutes. Do we have the City Manager? Do we have the City Manager? Okay. It is, uh, seven o'clock, and we will go ahead and convene and call to order the regular San Bruno City Council meeting of June 8th, 2021, at 7:00 PM. We will call it to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Mason is not present yet. Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. Thank you very much. I'm going to ask, uh, if you would, uh, maybe turn the mic off and, and join me in the, uh, Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, I'm going to move on to item number three, which is public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals will be allowed up to three minutes. It is the council policy to refer matters raised in this forum, staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits council from discussing or acting upon any matter that is not agendized pursuant state. Do we have, and, folks, if there's anybody from the public that would like to speak on items not on the agenda, now would be the time to please raise your hand, so I can call upon, you can be called upon by the City Clerk. Again, this would be the opportunity, if it's not on the agenda, to please raise your hand, so you can be called upon. Not seeing anything at this time, we will proceed on to item number four, announcements and presentations. The fir-, uh, the first one, uh, I will ask the, um, City Clerk.
Thank you. Uh, the storm drainage and flood protection fee election ballots will be counted on Wednesday, June 16th, 2021, beginning at 10:00 AM in San Bruno City Hall, Conference Room 115. That, the ballot counting can be observed via Zoom and in person with limited capacity. Currently, we expect that around 10 members of the public may be able to fit in the room, but of course, we'll adjust, and we will make that public as we get closer to the time. The ballot, where am I? The Zoom link will be posted and available on the city's website at www.sanbruno.ca.gov/elections. The results of the tabulation are expected to be announced at the June 22nd, 2021 City Council meeting, and will be certified by resolution. However, I do want to note that once we have completed the ballot counting, we will be posting the unofficial, uh, results to the city website as soon as the ballot counting is completed, so that people will at least have an idea of where we stand.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Uh, next item is item B. Join us for a community meeting on mountain flying safety that will be held on Monday, June 21st, at 6:00 PM. The community meeting will include a presentation and guest speaker from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. The meeting will be conducted via Zoom, and a link will be available soon on the city's homepage at www.sanbruno.ca.gov. And I appreciate for us having that, because as you know, many communities are experiencing that, and so this is the proper agency, and so they will be, uh, there to conduct the meeting. Item number C, receive update on COVID-19 response updates. Jennifer Dianos, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. We pulled up the presentation here. My name is Jennifer Dianos, I'm the Assistant to the City Manager, and I am here on behalf of the Emergency Operations Center Public Information Team to provide with the COVID-19 update. I'm, my clicker isn't working here. There we go. Okay, so this evening's agenda, I will go, um, over the Beyond the Blueprint, that's the, um, now famous June 15th date, that's, uh, coming up next week. COVID-19 vaccination availability statistics, and, uh, a program for cash prizes from the state, City Services and Resources, and then I'll be available for questions after that. So, I'll start with the Beyond the Blueprint. This is, uh, the state of California ending the blueprint for a safer economy. So, for the last, uh, year, or more than a year, we've, um, underwent changes to businesses and operations and modifications to how we go into the marketplaces, um, and this is going to change beginning June 15th. As of that date, businesses may return to usual operations, similar to what was, uh, before COVID, um, if we can all remember that, it seems like it was yesterday and forever ago, um, with the exception of mega events. And a mega event is defined as 5,000, uh, people indoors and 10,000 people outdoors. After June 15th, there will be no restrictions for capacity limitations and physical distancing. Uh, masking and feet coverings will be required per the California Department of Public Health guidance, that will remain current. Um, travelers should follow the CDC and the California Department of Health travel advisory, and that will identify what is and, um, is not recommended. And some employers are, most employers in California are subject to CalOSHA requirements, and those will stay, um, as indicated by OSHA, so that is separate from the June 15th date. As of, as of today, it stands that we still remain in the yellow tier, and so we'll be in the yellow tier for the last week of the blueprint for a safer economy. The COVID-19 vaccination, so with the increase in vaccination and decrease in COVID cases, um, we do have here, uh, in San Bruno, our local statistics, as of yesterday, June 7th, 79.5% of our population 12 and above have been vaccinated. Um, 67 to 77, that's four census tracts within our healthy equity quartile, have been vaccinated. And that's in comparison to the countywide statistics. Uh, countywide, we're at 84.8 for 16 and above, and 82.9 for 12 and above, also as of yesterday, June 7th. Um, in the health quartile, it's 71.6% of our population, um, and, uh, for 16 and over, excuse me, and 67.9 for 12 and above. Um, in comparison to the nationwide goal, that goal is always 70%, um, and so we've met or exceeded that, um, to some extent. The vaccine availability, um, is, is now broad, and so Californians aged 12 and over are eligible for vaccination. There are local vaccination sites that are available, and most, if not all, do not require appointments. Um, there's a comprehensive list available on our county health website, and that's smchealth.org, and there's a direct link on this slide, um, and on our website to bring you to that calendar directly. You can also go to myturn.ca.gov, and that includes, uh, a more broader scope for region-wide, um, availability pharmacies. And for those that don't have access to the internet, there's a phone number that's available through the state that has the same information, and that number is 833-422-4255. Um, so in addition to getting vaccinated, there's, there's a wide variety of locations that you can go to get vaccinated, and I'm just going to pick one that I think is pretty great, that's a, a good idea and opportunity for those who have not yet been vaccinated, but it will be at, available at the Samatay County Fair. And that's going to start this weekend. It will be at Gate 5, at 1346 Saratoga Drive in Samatay. Not only will you get the benefit of being vaccinated, there's free admission, uh, for the vaccinated individual at the county fair itself, you'll get $20 food voucher to enjoy at the county fair, and for free ride tickets. Um, that all is free, um, and all are welcome, regardless of immigration status. There are several other locations, including high, local high schools, SFO is hosting a vaccination site, and so there are plenty of opportunities, this just happens to be a fun one here. And if that is not enough, um, the state of California is also offering Vax for the Win, and this is really a cash incentive for those that have and have not been vaccinated yet. So, the three components that are on the screen, um, 10 winners will be selected on June 15th to receive 1.5 million, um, in a lottery style, winning. There's a drawing for $50,000, uh, on Friday. Um, this past Friday, 15 people were selected to win this drawing, and there's going to be another 15, uh, this upcoming Friday on June 11th. And for those that haven't been vaccinated, um, there's an opportunity to get a $50 gift card. So, until funds are depleted, starting, uh, late in May, the first 2 million Californians that start and complete the vaccination can receive a $50 gift card. And if you have already been vaccinated, don't worry, because you don't really have, you don't have to do anything, uh, to get entered into the drawing. So, you're automatically entered once you're vaccinated. And the good news is that the 50,000 dollar drawing last Friday, um, there were several Bay Area winners, unfortunately not in San Antonio County, but they were local nonetheless. City Services and Resources, um, heart, Emergency Operations Center remains activated and will continue to monitor status, that's even after the June 15th date. There are no major changes to City Services since our last report up to the City Council, with the exception of a couple of items. So, the public water fountains have reopened, and that's as of last week. Uh, our team is, uh, in process of developing a plan for the senior center reopening, is currently underway, and will be announced once that plan is available. And this is not a change, but just a reminder, indoor rentals at the recreation center will remain closed due to the construction of the new recreation and aquatic center that we just assessed. Customer service counters will remain open for in-person assistance. Appointments are encouraged but not required, and we do have, as a convenience, um, this is And we do have, as a convenience, this has remained available throughout COVID. We have a payment center that's on our city's homepage. And so that'll really route you to the appropriate webpage to make a payment for your water bill, to make a payment for your city net services bill. So it's all in one page. So it's convenient, one-stop shop. And lastly, the California COVID-19 rent relief. So don't be thrown off by the title. It is called rent relief, but it is for both rent and utilities. This is for financial assistance for those that are income-eligible renters and landlords. And this program is really designed to assist those that are impacted by COVID-19 to assist with unpaid back due rent and utilities. And so you can check eligibility and you can apply at housingiskey.com. This is a program that has been available and remains available. There is a portal in English. There's another portal in Spanish and both are available on the state website. Earlier today, I don't have a slide, but earlier today, the county did also announce a program for relief for small businesses that will waive permit fees from the county health department. And so that program is also designed to support small businesses and will be reflected in the annual permit renewals. And so more information will be forthcoming on that. But that was announced and it is a token of support from the county to support our local businesses. That's all I have for you this evening. Just a reminder to sign up for SMC Alert for emergency notifications and to follow us on social media. And with that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jennifer, for the report and the update. Any questions from colleagues? Okay, not seeing any because stop sharing the...
Thank you.
Thank you very much again. Okay, next we're going to move on to item D. If we could bring in our mosquito abatement? For director member, please.
I do have him coming in. It's taking a little longer than normal.
No problem. Item D is to issue a proclamation declaring mosquito awareness week as of June, for June 20th through the 26th of 2021. He is with us and I will read a few of the wherethes and I will virtually hand it to Robert and he can please say a few words to update us. Whereas the district works with mosquito and vector control districts throughout California, the United States Environmental Protection Agency and the State Department of Public Health to reduce pesticide risks to humans from mosquito and vector-borne diseases and nuisance. And whereas National Mosquito Control Awareness Week will increase the public's awareness of the threat of diseases and encourage the public to take action in preventing mosquito transmitted diseases and will highlight the activities of the various mosquito and vector research and control agencies working to minimize the health threat within California. Now therefore, I Rico, the Medina Mayor of the City of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim the week of June 20th through the 26th, 2021 as mosquito control awareness week in the city of San Bruno. And I ask that all citizens become a part of the team to quote, "Fight the bite." And now I'd like to turn it over to who represents the city of San Bruno exceptionally well and has always been willing to do that for us, Rico and their director board of member Rico.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Mayor, City Council and Staff. I'm Robert Rico, the City of San Bruno's trustee to the Samatay County Mosquito and Vector Control District. And I'm here to accept the city's proclamation recognizing mosquito awareness week here in San Bruno. On behalf of the Samatay County Mosquito and Vector Control, I'm happy to accept this proclamation. I would like to read a short prepared statement which is as follows. The district thanks the council for actively supporting the district through this proclamation and legislatively. The district thanks the city, its staff and its residents for their continued assistance as we fight the bite. Park staff have reported dead birds, which the district has been able to promptly pick up and test for West Nile virus and have found to be carrying West Nile virus. They've been able to take the appropriate actions faster. Residents continue to report their mosquito concerns. Just a little bit about how I, as your trustee, participate on the district's board of trustees. I continue to serve on the district's legislative committee as we track pending state and federal bills that may affect our San Bruno community, Samatay County and the district. And we meet regularly with various legislators. I continue to chair a policy and procedures committee where we update district policies and procedures as required by county, state and federal requirements. And finally, I continue to serve on the finance committee where we monthly review the district's finances and budgets as well as review the district's five-year plan and budget to ensure that the district can continue to provide the needed and desired services for the residents of Samatay County and the city of San Bruno. Together, the city and its residents continue to work as a team, fighting the bite. Either by calling the district at 650-344-8592 or going to the webpage www.smcmvcd.org. Thank you for your proclamation and allowing me to give the short district update.
No, and thank you for being here to accept it. And again, we do appreciate what you do and what you have been doing to represent San Bruno and the information and reports that you give the council on a timely fashion. So thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, we will move on to item E. Receive a presentation from the fire and police chiefs regarding the city's requirements for the use of safe and sane fireworks in San Bruno and San Bruno's policies. And I know that as I had asked for this to be up earlier than it usually is because as we know, last year there was, when we started receiving emails, I have started to receive them and I thought it was best for us to put this on the agenda for the community to hear it and get an earlier update. And I'll turn it over to either, I believe, the fire chief first.
I'm here.
Chief.
Great. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council, Ari Delay, your fire chief. Thank you very much for having us here this evening. We're here to present information regarding the safety enforcement for this year's fireworks and 4th of July event. I'm joined here this evening by my colleague, Police Chief Ryan Johansson. And we're already on the next slide. I will start out by presenting the fire department's preparations for this year's firework and 4th of July celebrations. First and foremost, I wanted to highlight the fact that the San Bruno Fire Department in coordination with the San Bruno Police Department will be in what we call Unified Command for this event. This is an important management practice that we have that is something we've always done in the past and it's an important structure that we provide to create a seamless response for both fire and law enforcement personnel for any potential event that happens during the 4th of July itself. We will have a Unified Command post that will allow us to co-locate and provide a seamless and coordinated response to any 4th of July events of the day. And this year, as we have done in the past, the San Bruno Fire Department will provide additional equipment and staff during the 4th of July event. And this also will provide us an opportunity to utilize the new Type 6 engine. If anybody recalls, we recently were granted a Type 6 engine for the city of San Bruno from CalOES and that's a great asset to have for any type of vegetation fire that we may have in the city and respond to any other emergencies throughout the city. The San Bruno Fire Department will also have all of our fire prevention staff on duty for the 4th to provide fire investigation services as necessary. And the San Bruno Fire Department and Police Department have created a joint public service announcement that was filled by City Net Services and will be aired on Channel 1 as well as we are currently in the process of sending out a citywide mailer, postcard with some of the safety issues associated with the 4th. Our fire prevention department or division has also conducted mandatory safety meetings with all the booth operators to make sure that they are really up to date with all the safety items that we want to make sure that they are aware of in relation to the selling fireworks and operations in the booths. And if I could have the next slide. A few safety items that I wanted to cover for this presentation this evening is the use of safe and sane fireworks for the public. First and foremost, the safe and sane fireworks have always, they will always have that seal from the state fire marshal's office as you see before you on the slide. Second, we'd like to reinforce that we want to keep fireworks at least 10 feet away from any structures to keep that safe distance and separation. Thirdly, we want to make sure we don't use any fireworks near formal materials, especially grass, trees and shrubs and any kind of garbage debris. And next, we want to make sure that folks would have an extinguisher hose or some other source of water nearby to be able to extinguish a fire if it did start during any of the 4th of July fireworks celebrations as well. And lastly, and most importantly, this is something that's specifically been an issue in the past. Folks want to really be safe and put fireworks away in some types of container. And often it's been placed in plastic containers to be able to get them out and covered up. And it's caused a few fires in the past for us. So we don't want to dispose of any recently used fireworks in garbage cans and any other receptacle that is not fireproof. So those are the primary safety concerns that we have from the fire department's perspective. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Police Chief Ryan Johansson.
Chief Johansson.
Thanks, Chief Delay. Appreciate it. If I can get my slide to advance here, I'll continue on with the presentation. So as Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you all know and as the community knows, the 4th of July is a major undertaking for your police department. This year will certainly be no exception. We are acutely aware of the fact that as we are coming out of COVID restrictions on June 15th and moving to a 4th of July holiday that falls on a Sunday on a weekend, it will no doubt be a very busy 4th of July, even among other 4ths of Julies. I also want to make sure that the community knows that the police department is acutely aware of the fact that while many revelers really enjoy the 4th of July and it's a big part, or for a long time has been a big part of what it means to live in San Bruno to participate in 4th of July fireworks activities. There's also a significant segment of the population that is deeply troubled by the noise, especially as it come along with illegal fireworks use, both in terms of safety, explosions, the things flying through the air. And as has been the case for many, many years here in the city of San Bruno, your police department will do absolutely everything it can to minimize the impact, the negative impact of the 4th of July celebration within our city. So beginning with some of the things we do each year and certainly are doing this year to prepare. Obviously, we always have this robust outreach and communications effort. Most of that is via social media. The fire chief already mentioned the joint PSA with FIRE. I think that the 4th of July celebration has been a part of San Bruno for so long now that most of the community knows what's allowed and what isn't allowed. And truthfully, what we're really asking for is for people to just do the right thing and comply with the law to begin with. This is not something that the police department is going to simply be able to enforce its way into compliance with because it is so widespread, involves so many people celebrating at the same time. So we really continue with the outreach, not because we necessarily need to educate the community so much as to ask the community to please help us to respect everybody on the 4th of July and celebrate in ways that are responsible, safe and that don't negatively impact the members of the community that really have a hard time with the loud explosions and some of the safety issues that come with fire. Namely, among those are any of our residents that suffer from PTSD and obviously pets have a great deal of trouble with the 4th of July. Additionally, pre-4th of July, we always go out and contact previous sort of problem locations, for lack of a better term, places where we've previously issued violations, citations, known residences that tend to have a number of illegal fireworks on the 4th of July. We maintain a list that rolls over year over year and we get out proactively just to try and remind them about the fines and to gain some compliance in advance. We also don't isolate our enforcement to the 4th of July alone. We deploy officers on an overtime basis to conduct proactive, unmarked unit enforcement of fireworks violations for several days leading up to the 4th of July and even for one to two days after the 4th of July, depending on when the 4th falls. And just in an effort to acknowledge the fact that for many members of the community, we've gotten reports that fireworks are already starting and we're still, you know, a few weeks away from the 4th holidays. So just know that we are out in advance trying to get on top of the problem. A big undertaking for us is every year, in collaboration with FIRE, we offer a formal incident action plan. This is a very robust document that covers basically all the contingencies that come with the 4th of July. Not just basic operations in terms of how we plan to address safety issues and illegal fireworks usage, but also in terms of how we'll respond to significant emergencies in collaboration with FIRE if they arise. The fire chief already mentioned these mandatory safety meetings with booth operators. Police play an active role in that as well. And then we issue informational warning notices to all city facilities so that we can get those out, not only through police and FIRE, but through public works and permitting and all the other groups that tend to have contact points with the members of our community in order to just make sure that the word's getting out that's forthcoming and what enforcement will kind of look like. So in terms of illegal fireworks enforcement, to clarify, safe and sane fireworks are permitted for use starting on the 28th of June from noon to 9:00 p.m. And then on the 4th, that expands from noon to 11:00 p.m. But technically, outside of those windows, even use of safe and sane fireworks, the ones that have the seal on it that the fire chief presented to us earlier, is illegal. They're not to be used outside of those windows and timelines. Additionally, you're only permitted to use safe and sane fireworks on private property and you must always, as the fire chief said, be at least 10 feet away from any structures. Fireworks, including safe and sane, are not permitted in any city parks, public parking lots, schools or open space areas. Again, going with the fact that they must be private property that does not belong to the public or the city. And believe it or not, misuse of safe and sane fireworks is dangerous and illegal and can also bring along with it the $1,000 fine that possessing or using illegal fireworks comes with. The most frequent violations we see in this regard would be the use of safe and sane fireworks in unsafe locations such as in open fields with grass or other fuels that can readily burn or the throwing of legal fireworks or using them in a manner that is inconsistent with what is suggested by the manufacturer. All of those behaviors are illegal as well. Our response on the 4th of July is, as usual, all police department staff will be working the 4th of July. It's mandatory. Every single one of our employees is ordered into work so that we can have the best, most robust response possible to support the community and through what is, can be a pretty challenging holiday for a lot of people. So please know that while I'm quite certain it will never be enough, given the scope of the problems that we often face on the 4th, your police department is pulling out all the stops and doing everything we can to be available to you. I can tell you, as I tend to share every year, this is an illustration. My oldest daughter's birthday is the 4th of July and I have not been there for one of those for 19 years now. The 4th of July is a huge undertaking for us and just please know that your police department is working very hard to make it better for all of you. We will be using marked units, highly visible, unmarked units that are not visible, bicycle units that are not very visible and surveillance teams in unmarked surveillance vans, including surveillance equipment. So I mention this for a couple of reasons. One is for those of you who might call and have complaints about people using illegal fireworks. If you don't see a black and white unit show up on your street, that does not mean the police department did not respond to your complaint. Oftentimes, the black and white units are about the least effective method to actually affect arrests and issue citations because we stick out like sore thumbs and it's very easy for people to see us coming from a very long distance and move out of the way. So we make a much more robust use of unmarked units, most of which you will not recognize as police vehicles unless you get real up close and see people wearing uniforms inside of them. The same is true of bicycles and our surveillance teams. Please know that it is exceedingly difficult to put together what you need to put together to issue a lawful citation for violation of fireworks, of illegal fireworks use. Know that the officer has to actually on view, we call on view, or actually witness firsthand the use of illegal fireworks, be able to pin it to a specific individual, be able to recover evidence, be able to safely detain that person and issue a citation for what really amounts to an infraction at the city municipal level. So there are a number of challenges and just know that, you know, when you, when you call and you tell us that you've seen someone using illegal fireworks, we still by law have to witness that ourselves and take several steps before a citation can be issued. And so I can tell you from working this detail for the past 16 years, it is just not as simple as showing up issuing tickets. Oftentimes, we're out of vehicles lurking around in the neighborhoods on foot for 20, 30 minutes in order to hone in on the source of illegal fireworks usage and issue citations. We are doing those things, but they take time, take resources. And so we can't be everywhere all at once. We'll talk a bit more about that in just a moment. It is a $1,000 administrative citation for the use or possession of any illegal fireworks. The short list here, right, if we talked about the seal, but if there's no seal or you're not sure, generally if a firework flies in the air beyond about six feet not sure, generally, if a firework flies in the air beyond about six feet, or if it explodes, it is illegal. And you can buy these things in what might seem like legal locations in the Bay Area. So a word of caution to the community that if it shoots in the air or it explodes, it is almost certainly illegal and could subject you to a $1,000 administrative fine from the city if you're seen by the police. Last year, we also used what we call social host citations. The municipal code does say that if your residence is deemed to be responsible for hosting a party or allowing illegal fireworks use to continue, we can cite the homeowner or person in control of that gathering. We do not have to find the actual individual who's lighting the fireworks themselves. And so please know that if you're hosting a party on the Fourth of July, it is your responsibility to ensure that none of this is going on associated with your groups and your party. When it comes to reporting violations that are pleased, this is a more difficult area, and this is something that we have worked a lot with in terms of proving our theories over the last several years. And I'll try to keep it brief by saying that the vast majority of the citations we issued every year are the direct result, the proactive efforts of the police officers working the enforcement detail. Because as I previously described, it usually takes some time to kind of work your way into identifying and seeing exactly who's using the fireworks and to make that detention issue the citation. And so what isn't a lot of value to us, and this is contradictory to most of what the police department relies on and does, you've heard me say many times that you are our eyes and ears as members of the community, and that remains true on the Fourth of July, but only if you see very specifically an individual person who you can describe that is lighting off illegal fireworks. If you do have that information, calling the police's non-emergency number at 650-616-7100 is the best way to provide information to us so that officers on the street can use it to hone in and issue a citation. What is not of value to us, in fact, really distracts our efforts from getting to the source of the problems and issuing citations, are the more vague reports. We are acutely aware of the fact that there are aerial fireworks and illegal fireworks being used all over the city on the Fourth of July. So reporting party that calls the police department to say, hey, it's been going on all night on my block, on, you know, the 100 block of X Street, or in this neighborhood, or near that park. Honestly, the volume of those calls is nothing more than a distraction from the police department doing the best work that it can do in order to deter the illegal fireworks usage. So while we appreciate reports from the community and the public at all times, this is a date where we'd ask that you use a measure of discretion and only make those calls and occupy the time of dispatchers who are handling hundreds and hundreds of calls over a really short span of time with good information that can be used to actually issue citations rather than just vague descriptions. So that concludes our presentation for both the Fire Chief and I. Thank you for your time and for giving us this opportunity to get out ahead of this a little bit and explain what's coming. I know there will be another presentation coming up closer to the Fourth of July, and then we always do the post-Fourth of July report to let the community know how the enforcement operations and other calls for service went. But for now, that's what we've got, and I'm happy to address any questions or comments from council or the community.
Thank you very much to both chiefs. And if we could stop sharing the screen right now, bring us all together. But again, yes, but once again, thank you to both of you for your presentations. I do see Councilmember Hamilton. It is up, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Delay, and thank you, Chief Johansson, for the presentations. I have a few questions. Will the PSA that's being put together for Channel 1 be made available online so we can spread it as far and wide as possible through our social media channels?
Yes, we'll always host a link to the video on our YouTube channel, so that can be obviously disseminated very easily, and then it'll be pushed out to all of the police department's social media networks as well.
Great, thank you. You talked about the proactive enforcement, pre-visiting the addresses where you've issued citations before. Will you also be able to visit addresses where you, we know that illegal fireworks have been used in the past, but were unable to cite because of all the difficulties that you just mentioned about actually being able to get to the point of issuing a citation?
Yeah, essentially, we maintain a list of complaint locations. It's not all attached to citations. In fact, in many cases, citations end up being issued to people who don't live in the city of San Bruno, and they're not necessarily associated with a residence. So these residential follow-ups are mostly about large-scale parties where we know there tend to be illegal fireworks used year over year.
That's great. Okay, thank you. And then last question regarding the social host citations. Do you have an approximate number of how many of those were given out last year?
This is just from my own personal recollection. I don't have it in front of me now, but I believe there were four issued last year of the thirty-some-odd citations issued.
Okay, thank you.
We generally just, I'm sorry, just to be clear, we generally, obviously, are going to do the best we can to give the homeowner or the resident an opportunity to comply for issuing those citations because it's great to say you have to be in control of your party, but it's also a very difficult thing to do, right? And you can't keep track of everyone all at once. So we'll typically issue warnings, and if we have to come back out for the same residents, that's when we'll issue those socialist sites.
Great, thank you. I just want to acknowledge the hard work and the near impossibility of the job that your teams will have on the Fourth, and thank you for it in advance. Thank you.
Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you. So let me start by adding my thanks to Councilmember Hamilton's appreciation to what both the fire and police have to go through to cover this event. And Chief Johansson, you especially having to make that family sacrifice every year in order to fulfill this obligation. It's unfortunate, but it is appreciated. Back before the pandemic, I did a ride-along, and I can attest to the frustration. Oddly enough, I think we were 15 minutes into the ride-along where the first citation was issued. It was somebody who, you know, clearly, first time doing it, had no idea what they were up to, but then the rest of the night, we were chasing shadows, and, you know, there were neighbors where there were lookouts for the people who were doing it, and they saw us coming a mile away, even undercover. So yeah, it's definitely frustrating. I wanted to ask about the communication that's going to go out, and I've heard concerns from the community about, you know, the dryness, the windiness, the fires that we've been dealing with that are still fresh in people's minds. Could there be a focus on that in the communication to sort of appeal to people's more practical sense and just really drive home that the danger that there is from these aerial fireworks? You know, if at all possible, I don't know how far along the process is in getting that message out, but it seems like that's a very real concern that might help drive the point home. And I also wanted to share, just today, I was on a roundtable discussion that took place with the League of California Cities, where, you know, there was almost 100 participants on that, and everybody expressing the same frustration, where, you know, they're writing their fines up to the maximum, they're, you know, increasing enforcement, and still having the same issues and concerns. So we're definitely not alone. You know, cities that allow the safe and sane, cities that don't allow safe and sane are all pretty much in the same boat. Some people are trying to get creative. They talked about using helicopters, using drones. I guess helicopters are really just not safe to fly in those situations. Some people had some success with drones, but we're definitely not alone. And so again, I just wanted to echo my thanks, and I appreciate everything that you all do.
Any other questions from colleagues? If there's anybody from the public who had a comment, please, now would be the time to raise your hand. If seeing no other hands up from colleagues or the public, I will just finish quickly that I did speak to the mayor of Pacifica this afternoon. Her and I had talked in regards to, as you know, they sell safe and sane fireworks as we do, which, as a reminder, is a voter initiative. We will get emails, which we had, is just ban everything, a voter initiative in '05 that passed, as same as Pacifica has done. So they also take cautionary measures, bring extra staff on, and that's where, how we're paying for these extra services, whether it's Public Works, FIRE, police, et cetera, is through a, I'll call it a surcharge, that is given and passed through to the client, to the customer. And that is what is deriving the monies and the resources that we're able to put on the streets. And unfortunately, as Chief Johansson said, he hasn't seen his daughter's birthday, and everybody has called in, right? And so that means they're not with their family and friends, and they are doing their best job to protect this community, and everybody, it's all hands on deck. So I again want to thank both of you and your departments, and we will all be, you'll be in our thoughts, and the same with the community as we embark upon this post-Fourth of July and our post-COVID times. So thank you again, appreciate it. And now we're going to move on to consent calendar, and that is consent on our items are considered routine or implemented in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions unless requested. I know we're going to make a comment on I. I believe, I mean, I usually let you folks start, so let me, sorry, I jumped. Go ahead. Anybody who would like an item pulled or a separate vote? Not seen any separate votes, but obviously maybe some additional questions or comments? I had said I, is there other items?
Item G, Mr. Mayor.
G, got it, thank you. Any others, colleagues? I was going to say item E. Just wanted to, we had the ad hoc, and just kind of bring a little update on that. So with that, why don't we go ahead and, okay, I'm just being notified, there is a hand up in the public, and I don't know if it was for the presentation or if it's on consent. Why don't we bring in speaker, please?
Paul Wapinski.
It's regarding 5G. Should I talk now, or do you want to wait?
Well, I'll announce it, and then we will get to that, and I'll bring you in. Thank you very much. Okay, so let's go back to the consent. We have three items. One is item E, authorized fireworks ban permit for 2021 upon findings that nonprofit organizations met requirements of resolution 2008-67, 2009-49, ordinance numbers 1700 and 1840. And I'd ask my colleague, Councilmember Salazar, to time in too, please, but there are 13 groups. Last year, there were 14. There's a maximum of 18. If there's more than 18, then there's the lottery. Keeping in mind, there are nine that are grandfathered in from the beginning of this process. As was indicated earlier, they have application process, which asks various questions. It asks as far as the group, which, as you can see in your report, various groups, scouts, baseball, Lions, Rotary, American Legion, et cetera. And they go ahead and do that and deal with the two firework vendors that they kind of coordinate, help file the state paperwork, they have to be on profit, they're usually giving back, and they're doing things in San Bruno, and they ask for a description on the application. Hey, you know, what are these funds being used for? A lot of them are scholarships, scholarships within the organizations, or soccer, so that if there's the need that way, or equipment, or other type of activities that they do. There's also, they have to be current on the monies, so they can't be owing monies from past. And like I said, we had 13 this year, and I think 14 will come back, but it is a maximum of 18. And I'll let Councilmember Salazar talk about our suggestion going forward for an ad hoc and the need or relevance for it, because he obviously was good, did an Excel spreadsheet to make sure everybody was meeting the criteria, which staff puts together. So Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so, yeah, I've been on the subcommittee for a few years, and it's generally, the process is that we review the stack of applications. There's a number of pieces of information that are required by ordinance that we look for, and so we just make sure that all of the paperwork is there. We look for that, the permit from the state fire marshal, which is required, so every group is required to do that. Most of the paperwork is actually done by the fireworks companies themselves, and so they're pretty diligent in filling out the forms and having the permission from the owners all submitted. And so it is fairly routine. The groups that are doing it have been doing this consistently for many years, and so they're known quantities in the community, they know their process, and so it is fairly routine. We had a conversation around, you know, whether the subcommittee is required. I believe that our consensus was that it's really not, staff is doing an adequate job of vetting it and needing all the requirements. And so our involvement is very, it's redundant to the process. We're not really adding a lot of value. We don't vet anything. We're not making any judgments. It's really just validating that everything is up to par with the ordinance, and I haven't found any inconsistencies in my time in doing it. And so, you know, I don't feel that it's required that we do it, and the ordinance makes it optional. So I'm sure it'll be up to future councils and mayors to decide if they want to bring it back, but, I mean, I would say, in my opinion, it's not something that's absolutely necessary.
And I concur with Councilmember Salazar, and even if it goes to, I believe it's June 2nd, the police and FIRE had a mandatory meeting with the users, and there was somebody from the organization, and if they didn't attend that, then they wouldn't be here tonight. So it's at this stage that they've met all the criteria, made the $750 payment, registered with the state, et cetera. So anyway, that is our feedback, and I just, we just wanted to update you since we had said we would follow that up. Is there any questions on that? Councilmember Hamilton?
Is there, I don't recall from patronizing these stands in the past, is there a requirement that the fireworks must be sold to a resident of San Bruno, like they check IDs and that sort of thing? And if not, have we ever considered having that be a requirement in the past? Because I know cities like Gilroy do that.
I was, I'm going to say no, but once you see the city attorney pop in there, I'm going to go right to him.
I'm not aware of what Gilroy does. Are you saying that there's a requirement that they can only sell to residents of the city in Gilroy?
Yeah, I read that in the news, so I can't, it's not necessarily.
That seems like a very unusual requirement that might be a violation of the interstate commerce clause, among many other things, but without literally knowing about that, I'd have to check. So normally, it's very difficult to restrict sales to some geographic area because, yes, for a lot of different reasons.
Understood, so thank you.
Thank you for the question. Vice Mayor Medina, did you have a question? Oh, that's for the next op, okay. Okay, all right, if nothing else, we're going to go on to G, and that was adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the alter planning and design for the development of the city's safe routes to school plan in an amount not to exceed And we did have a member of the public that wanted to speak on this, so if, City Clerk, if you can, bring in Paul.
Yes, Paul Wapinski, I'm bringing you back in.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I read this a couple of times because it's still kind of not clear what exactly this is supposed to accomplish, and I understand it's a grant, but it seems like there's a lot of bucks being spent for the bang. It seems like the bottom line intent is to ask parents not to drive their kids to school. So couldn't that be done in a way of like maybe sending an email to them or a letter to them instead of spending $250,000? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, and going to bring it back to City Council and Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure staff could do a way better job of explaining what this grant actually does. I recall being at one of the workshops, and if, I told it because I think it's important that our community know how we are working with our schools, how important our student safety is, and if staff could just give a little bit more background on it and explain the extent of what's going to happen with this money, that would be. And if staff could just give a little bit more background on it and explain the extent of what's going to happen with this money, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, so the Safe Routes to School program, the goal is to identify through various means, walking audits, surveys, engagement with, I think one of the critical components is engagement with the community between the city and the school and the students and their parents, is to understand what some of the hurdles might be. We understand that, you know, we can encourage them to walk and bike when they can, but there may be, you know, fundamental structural obstacles that, you know, mentally don't make them feel comfortable doing so. And so what the Safe Routes to School plan does is to allow for those to be identified, their engagement, and then to the walking audit. And in addition to infrastructure changes, there's also programmatic programs that can be identified. And so this plan, what it does, it is grant funded. There is a small local match, but what it does is to allow us to be more competitive for those grants because some of the infrastructure improvements could be, you know, more substantial. And so this makes us more competitive because we've had that community engagement and there's a process and it is a well-recognized document.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I was wondering if, because I recall staff, city staff, I remember Councilmember Laura Davis walked along with myself and students, parents over at Bel Air. Is this in addition to the work at Bel Air?
It is, there are a number of schools identified with the public schools and the private schools. And we've reached out to the schools to understand their interest. Caltrans does allow us to, if the school is not interested, for instance, a private school indicated that, that they were not interested in participating for one reason or another. And so it do allow flexibility, but we did identify the various schools. And one additional school was reached out to us after this, the RFP proposal process. And so we have added them, but we could potentially swap them with the one that didn't want to and there could be some potential savings.
Right, thank you very much. And Mr. Mayor, Superintendent Espinoza sent us an email and I just wanted to make sure, take knowledge, his appreciation.
Well, I think, let's just read it. City Manager Grogan and Mayor Medina, and you were also CC. I'm emailing because I noticed that you will be discussing and taking action on the Safe Routes to School Plan. I wanted to let you know that our school board and district, we appreciate our city working to ensure that our students are safe as they walk to and from school. Thanks again and have a great meeting. And then again, from the superintendent, Jose Espinoza. And I was at that, I think they call it a, I have to ask the Vice Mayor, I think they call it a walking audit or? I was at the Bel Air one too, you just sent me.
Right, right, we were on the other side.
So it was interesting to actually watch students in here from the folks that came together. And you act, when you're looking at it, which I tell you, is you kind of see a different perspective and, and different set of eyes about potential hazards or angles or maybe vegetation that should be cut back and things like that. That, you know, you drive by, you don't think about it, but when you're actually watching these young people coming to and from or their folks or guardians getting them, it's in a different light. So I, I see, I see value to that. So is there anything else from my colleagues on item G? Let's move to item I. Accept resignation from traffic and safety and parking committee member effective May 28, 21, and direct City Clerk to post a vacancy notice, McCordens, at State Law. And what this is, is not somebody's leaving, they're just now going to have another role. So Mark Dorazo has been serving on the traffic and parking committee, but he is its chair. Now he's joined the San Bruno Planning Commission. So we'll say that the mayor and Vice Mayor wanted to make some depth of knowledge and make him for the service, the FPC. He didn't outdo Tom though, as far as Tom's years on the FPC. But we very much appreciate the time and effort and folks that are willing to give up their time to help out a community. Is there anything else on consent? Is there any action from my colleagues?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. Okay, there we go. The motion that Hamilton second, Salazar roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to item six, which is conductive business. And City Clerk?
Item 6A, receive a report and confirm date for transition to a by-district method of city elections. Consider adopting a resolution appropriating $46,000 from general fund balance and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with National Demographics Corporation for districting services.
Turn it over to the city manager.
Good afternoon, members of the City Council and members of the public watching at home and on Zoom. I have the pleasure to present this presentation regarding by-district elections. Supporting me tonight to answer any questions will be the city attorney as well as the city clerk who have supported this endeavor and were part of the presentation that you received in 2020. So the objective for this item, we want to follow up on council's direction and your intent to transition to district elections for the November 2022 City Council elections and obtain approval tonight to initiate the required work. That's the demographic analysis, the public outreach, the production of preliminary district maps, and the development of various options for the city council to consider. And our last objective is we want to outline the scope of work and the schedule for this districting process. The recommended action is before you on the screen, as well as the City Clerk just read it. So we'll, we'll come back to this towards the end of the presentation, but it's to essentially initiate this work with a firm called National Demographics Corporation. So our presentation has an agenda. We'll go through a little bit about, about the background. We'll talk about the services from NDC and the summary schedule. We'll then talk about the by-district elections and how that may interface with mayoral election structure and then talk about next steps. So background. Council will remember that on March 10th, 2020, you received a very detailed staff report that is attached to the staff report for this, for tonight. That staff report regarded options to mitigate the city's exposure from a potential claim that we are not in compliance with the California Voting Rights Act, as well as attorney fees that could have to be paid due to the receipt of a claim. In addition, the city council received a detailed presentation from Doug Johnson, the president of the National Demographics Corporation on transitioning to a by-district method for city elections. And there were several conversations with regard to the California Voting Rights Act. We are not replicating that presentation for you tonight. We are beginning from your prior direction. And at the end of the March 10th meeting, the city council also discussed ways to mitigate the risk and eventually adopted a resolution of intent to transition in either 2020 or 2022, thus obtaining a safe harbor. And the, the language from that city council resolution is on the screen and I'll, I'll read it. It expressed the city council's intent to transition from an at-large election system to a by-district election system for city council members commencing in either November 2020 or November 22. The very last thing that the city council directed for staff to come back to the city council at the very next meeting for further discussion, and we did that. And so on March 24th, we returned to the city council and there was a significant discussion with regard to the pros and cons of transitioning to district elections in 22, in 2020 or 22. And you'll all remember that COVID-19 was really new to us and there were significant conversations about the unknown related to community engagement and exactly how remote participation would work during COVID-19, which had just begun. And in addition, there was conversations around delaying until 2022 would allow for a thorough discussion of the possible, of a possible charter change or moving from a general law city to a charter city, which is one of your strategic initiatives, and as well as alternative voting mechanisms for the election of city council members in conjunction with district elections. Those alternative methods require us to be a charter city, which again is a strategic initiative. And so at the conclusion of the March 24th, 2020 meeting, the city council passed a resolution to postpone the demographic analysis and community engagement until 2022. And so it was instead discuss and decide if we are going to a district election structure in 22 after the community outreach and public engagement. And again, that's what we're here to talk about launching. And so in furtherance of that, the staff communicated once again with NDC, National Demographics Corporation, and received an updated call for the work to begin. At a high level, there's a very, very detailed scope of work attached to the staff report. But NDC would provide support for a advisory or independent districting commission. That is an option, not every city does it, but many cities do. And we will bring that discussion to the city council on if you would like to set up an advisory or independent districting commission. The proposal within NDC does include the cost to support that commission and no additional costs. There's a course of demographics analysis and using census data. There's the GIS mapping, there's presentations at public hearings where NDC will overview, will provide an overview of redistricting laws and the jurisdictional demographics. A lot of the information about the California Voting Rights Act and why cities increasingly are transitioning to district elections. So that's built into the scope to have that public education. They will provide outreach assistance, a project website, and then various online mapping tools for both the city council and the public. Pursue law to underneath the districting process, there are at least five meetings that have to be conducted. And we are, by the way, planning more because there are various community engagement workshops. But, but the minimum is two public hearings prior to any maps being drawn or discuss, or, or discussion of the composition of the districts. Two public hearings after the maps have been drawn. During which the public can provide input regarding the content of the draft maps and propose a sequencing of elections. And then another final public hearing to introduce the ordinance to establish by-district elections. And then a final meeting that has to occur at least by the next, at least until the next regularly scheduled meeting for, for the adoption of that ordinance. So project timeline and summary is on the screen. This is roughly a 10-month process. And so it is beginning from June 2021 going until April 2022. The, the task for each of the various phases are on the screen. So in June and July, there'll be project planning, discussions about the public mapping tools that we will use. Again, that decision on whether we will have an independent commission or advisory group and talk about a host of other options related to the project and the components. And so there will be meetings of the city council where we will have, have these discussions. Staff will have some internal launch meetings and then prepare to bring those decisions to the city council. And then we'll begin the, the project outreach and we ramp up our information sharing to the community. Through July, through September, the mapping tools will be prepared with preliminary population data and pre-draft map hearings will be held. October 21 through January of 22, the census data will be received and processed and they'll develop draft maps and have public workshops and hearings and develop the information for the city council to consider. With the idea that we would come to January through April and have the, the final process for any revisions to the map, but have final city council action on if we're transitioning to district elections, what will be the sequence of, of those elections by April 2022? In the, another part of this presentation, there have been conversations at the city council with regard to adjusting the mayoral election structure. We did have conversations with NDC about this. And so that's included within your staff report and we'll, we'll, we'll give a few slides to just have that discussion. Because the city staff has been directed to take a look at the cost of potentially putting an item on the gubernatorial special election for 21. And so we will be coming back with that information. The date of that election is not known, but there have been some questions on how, how would that potentially relate to district elections? And through, through these slides, we hope to talk about that briefly. So as we know, our current San Bruno mayoral election structure has a directly elected at-large process. And what does that mean? So directly elected means elected separately from the other seats on the city council. At-large means essentially that there's no district, there's no residency restriction within the city. This was adopted and approved by San Bruno voters in 1977. A key point about by-district elections is the process you have to elect your mayor is not mutually exclusive with having by-district elections. And what that means is that the city may retain its current structure for how the mayor is elected or you may change that process, which again will require voter approval. And so at a high level, we wanted to just show that, which is, this is our current structure where the blue line represents the city boundaries, the red line represents the, the mayor's position. And so our, our current process is, as you know, five persons on the city council, that all of them with the mayor directly elected at large and all, and the other four city council members serving at large. And so should the city decide to go to district elections and retain the current directly elected at-large mayor? That is possible. And, and there's a graphic of, of that on, on the screen. And so that is where you would have four council districts. Instead of having your four council members at large, there are four specific city council districts and your mayor remains directly elected and at large. Should the city council decide to put the measure to, to potentially change that before the voters? In a rotational structure, you have a couple of options. One is to have, as shown here, is a by-district process with a rotating mayor where you have five districts and the mayorship rotates among those five districts. And so in this model, you would not have a at-large district. The next option would be to have a by-district process with a wrote, with a rotating mayor, retain an at-large district. And so that's shown here where you would have a, a structure that has four distinct council districts. So your city would be broken up into four districts, but you would also retain a fifth at-large district. But your mayoral selection process rotate amongst all of the five districts. And so that would at some point include the at-large and then go through the, the other four as well. So in summary, the city may retain, the city may retain, sorry, I did not put my phone on mute. The city may retain its current electoral process should it, should, should it go to district elections? And there's options for that. The city may change its electoral process for the mayor and there's an approval process for that that requires action by the voters. There are several by-district election structures to choose from. Some can be implemented by council, whereas others, of course, require voter approval. Should the city council opt to adjust its mayoral selection process, by doing, doing so before transitioning to by-district elections is advisable. And that comes from NDC. Well, we had the conversation in a sense, should the city transition to district elections in 22? If there is a decision to adjust the mayoral selection process, what NDC advises is that having that discussion in 21 does make some sort of sequencing sense because you would essentially know that process before you confirm your district, your, your districts that you select. And lastly, no direction is required from the city council at this moment on the mayoral selection process under if you decide. on the mayoral selection process under if you decide to move to districts. Uh, we are simply providing this information because the question had been raised of how does district elections and the mayoral selection process, uh, work? And they're not mutually exclusive and you can have the current structure or other structures. So with regard to next steps, uh, again, uh, uh, we are here tonight to receive city council input and direction on the items that are, uh, that are, uh, on the action items that are before you. Uh, uh, should, uh, authorization enter into the contract be approved? Staff will of course do that. Um, and the, there, there's also another contract, um, aligned to this effort. And that's to obtain meeting facilitation services for our public outreach as well as support for community engagement. Uh, and within, uh, the, um, um, NDC proposal, there were, there was, uh, conversations or a section on that. Uh, and we have sought a proposal, uh, for additional support with meeting facilitation that would also come with, uh, creating summaries of all of that public input and engagement, providing them to the council on a timely basis as well as, uh, retaining all of that information and, and, and organizing it and, and helping with our, uh, outreach, uh. Then the cost of that is not for you tonight. There, the cost of that is included in the proposed twenty twenty-one budget. Uh, there is approximately sixty thou, there is sixty thousand dollars in the city clerk's budget for this effort that includes both the meeting facilitation and public outreach services as well as the cost for mailings. Uh, we know that doing a citywide mailing, which we would certainly do uh, with this effort is approximately five to seven thousand dollars per mailing. And, and we are envisioning at least doing four of those mailings. Uh, and then we would initiate the redistricting process with an internal kickoff meeting, uh, develop a detailed project schedule and then launch, uh, the community engagement. So again, the recommended action before the city council is to receive, uh, the report and direct staff and provide direction regarding the intent to transition to bi-d, to a bi-district method for city uh, elections and consider adopting a resolution appropriating forty-six thousand from the general fund, fund balance, um, and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with National Demographics Corporation for districting services. So I want to thank you. Um, we are, uh, here for any questions or, uh, additional input or direction from council.
Thank you for the report and if we could stop sharing the screen. One possible, thank you so much. If there's any members of the public, uh, have comments or wish to speak on this, you, you can go ahead and raise your hand now, uh, and I'll give that a couple of minutes. But in the meantime, I'm gonna bring it to council for questions. Councilmember Mason.
Uh, from my, thank you. From my recollection, we were going to, we had requested, um, options, um, around districting. There were options. And if there were, what were they? And we had also requested demographics around, uh, why San Bruno in particular, uh, may be at risk of this, you know, this letter that ever, that has, um, put a lot of cities in fear of having to pay out these funds. Um, and I don't, I don't see any of this.
And so the city council did not request that. Uh, what you did at the March twenty-fourth meeting is, uh, postpone entering into a contract for that work in twenty twenty. Um, and we are here tonight, uh, requesting off financial authorization to, to do that analysis, uh, to present those draft maps at demographic analysis, um, which is the process and the scope of work that is outlined in the, uh, National Demographics Corporation's scope of work that's attached to the staff report. And so that, that work is a part of this effort and it has not been done because we've not entered a contract for that work in twenty twenty.
Okay, so I don't, um, I'll have to watch it, but I, I know that I had requested, um, what the alternatives were and what the options were, uh, when this came to us last year with the contract. And I believe it was for seventy-five thousand dollars.
Councilmember, we said at, at, at that time, the contract was forty-five thousand dollars and it is only one thousand dollars more this year. Uh, and that was on the, uh, May tenth and May twenty-fourth, uh, agenda items for twenty, in twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you.
Are there questions from colleagues? Okay, now I'm seeing it. Uh, it's all right. Vice Mayor Medina.
Thank you for the report. It, uh, took us a while to get here. Um, I think we were being cautious, um, in moving forward. And I recall that at a certain point, we also were told that getting census data was really important because of the demographics. Um, and that's not gonna come until later on in the year according to the schedule. So, um, I'm in favor of, of, of this contract. I believe it, it, we do have a very qualified, uh, vendor for these services. Um, at what point do we decide if it's an advisory committee or it's the, the, the other, the other one that was on that list? Um, and, and that's my question.
We'll be coming to the city council with that, uh, question in July. Uh, once we enter to contract, uh, we'll, we'll have a kickoff meeting. Uh, we'll organize, uh, the, all, all the work and then create a, a detailed, uh, uh, calendar that has, uh, actual target base for the meetings that we're gonna have. Uh, and then, uh, NDC will support the, uh, city staff in having a study session with the city council to talk about, uh, all of the options related to the project, uh, which is sort of a number of workshops. Uh, but, but the, the key critical question absolutely is whether there will be an advisory or or, uh, or independent commission to support the work.
Okay, and, and, and as we're, uh, talking about it now, I believe, um, additional options were, would be available in the elections if we were a charter city. I think, I think we had some discussion about that. And, um, it was mentioned in this staff report, so that's something, um, maybe, uh, city manager can discuss that a little bit more just for a little bit more clarity on, on the options that are, that are ahead of us.
Sure, um. In March of twenty twenty, uh, there were questions around different alternative voting mechanisms, uh, that can be used for city council elections. All of those require in a charter city, which is a separate strategic initiative, a separate effort. Um, I believe there were, there, I can't honestly remember the questions around, uh, how many people are on the city council, uh, occurred at March. But I do know over the last year, uh, the question of, uh, could there be more city council members or how many districts would, would you draw? That is again tied to being a charter city. At a general law city, you can only have five seats on the council. And so I do know that there are options, uh, or alternatives that have been, uh, talked about. In many ways, nearly all of those are related to the charter, charter process. And should we decide to switch from a general law city to a charter city? Some of those have implications on how many districts we draw, uh, and how those council members would be elected, uh, in those districts. But not all of those questions are actually, um, sort of dependent upon or mutually exclusive to the work that we would do in this project. But the fact that we will have both efforts going on over the next twelve months is important, uh, so that we can have those conversations and dovetail those efforts.
Okay, um, that brings up the next question about that actual, actual dovetailing. Um, so doesn't the charter city have to be done first to be able to enact the options? So just want to make sure that one has to go first, right?
I, I see the city attorney, uh, has joined. You, you, you've been here, you just negged your cameras on, so go ahead.
Uh, no, and if the city manager has something to add, I, I think, uh, Vice Mayor Medina, I think you're correct. So you, for example, would not be able to, uh, draw seven districts if, if you didn't already have a charter, uh, charter that was already adopted by the voters that says you have seven council members. So there's, there's a, I think there's the sort of the cart before the horse issue with respect to the charter city and the city manager is correct, of course, that that is one of the strategic initiatives. But that strategic initiative, um, in the past had focused on adopting a charter for essentially the sole reason of adopting the transfer tax or the real estate tax and not to make other, uh, wide-ranging changes in the city's, uh, structure. But that, of course, is within the city council's purview. But it then may affect, uh, which has to go first.
Uh, and I'll just say that the conversation on if the city council would like to propose increasing the number of city council seats is one of those items that would be a sequencing where you have to do one or the other. However, uh, if that was not on the table, you could certainly have alternative voting mechanisms as has been, as, as, as council members have, uh, desired to receive information on. And there, you don't have that sequencing issue. Uh, and so the city attorney is right, when we launch the charter, uh, process, uh, we will have to really decide at that point what's gonna be in that proposed charter should we decide to move forward. And what we said during the strategic initiative process is, for lack of a better term, it would be a, a very limited, um, charter process aligned to a potential real estate transfer tax. And so, uh, absolutely, uh, every time we talk about a charter, additional things are brought up. Uh, and we're gonna have to make those decisions. Uh, two separate strategic initiatives, charter city and district elections that may have, uh, be intertwined. At this point, they are not based on the direction we have from the city council. And so you don't have a cart before the horse issue if you decide to proceed with the demographic work, map production and community engagement related to district elections. I, I hope that's, that's clear.
Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, sir. Um, so there, there's, I, I've, I've, over the past few years, I've heard a lot of, um, confusion around charter cities and what charter cities can do and can't do. And, um, in hearing this conversation, I pulled up the, the state government code. And it says the government of a general law city, which we are, is vested in, A, a city council of at least five members. So at least five. We could do more. There's, there's no upper limit in, uh, what a general law city can do. So I just wanted to, to point that out that i- if we're gonna bring up those parameters, let's make sure that we, that we have them right because, uh, I, I think there is an opportunity if we wanted to go more districts to do that.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Well, my, the, the, my comment on this part of the discussion might, might change based on what Councilmember Salazar just said. Um, but what I would, it seems like the, the whole cart before the horse issue will really only comes into effect if we need, if we need more seats and if we want more seats. And I would want the, I would want to see what the, what the, the analysis that we'll get for the, for what we're, you know, the proposal for tonight. I would imagine that analysis, you know, would, would come back and, and, and would include how many districts would be, would, would be appropriate given the size of our city and the demographics that are seen. So I would, you know, that, that might be the, the path forward is just to move ahead the way that was being outlined here. And if the, if the recommendation comes back that says, you know what, given the way that the city is, is laid out, that it makes more sense for you guys to have seven, then either, as Councilmember, uh, Salazar said, we just go seven r- right away, or if we have to be a charter city, then maybe we have to change gears to do that first.
Um, I, the city, uh, city attorney, I, I sense you may have something to add.
One comment, I'm really hoping when we go back to in-person that there's gonna be some way that the city attorney can just magically appear whenever something legal needs to happen. That's been my favorite word.
No, this has actually worked out better. Don't have to look for a hand or anything. I just know to go, go to you. So it works good.
I, I just want to be off camera not to distract the, the main presentation. So, uh, I think we, we have a, a variety of questions that are swirling around. And I'll, I'll begin it with the city council. Uh, really very few of them have been vetted. Um, and I would say almost none of them have been completely vetted. And so these questions about, well, can we have five? Can we have more than five? What does that require? Um, you know, really nobody is, that I know of, has looked into those. I haven't been asked to look into them, so I haven't. Um, it is, you know, uh, Councilmember Salazar is correct. That's what the government code says. However, I believe without having done further research, that that would require a vote of the people to increase the number of seats on the city council. So I don't think that's a, an action the city council could take, although I'm not sure about that. So I, I could be wrong and I, but, but that's the problem with sort of trying to design these processes on the fly at a city council meeting when there's really been an incomplete opportunity for, for staff to, to do their work. And that is a concern because if there is required to be an election to increase the number of seats, if, if that is the case, then you do have to have that before each charter, uh, excuse me, before district elections are adopted. You, you can't have one being contingent on the other at, at the same election. So I think, uh, there are a variety of interests involved in charter city, there are a variety of interests involved in district elections. And, uh, what we're really just trying to do is figure out what is it that, that staff is going to be tasked to do and when do those things have to be done? And can they be done in the time that's allotted? Because as the city manager indicated, uh, there's already going to be a necessary five meetings for a charter city and additional meetings that, you know, that are already being planned for that. So if, if now there is sort of additional, uh, work that is going to be necessary regarding the charter city, um, and district elections, then we, we all sort of need to do that. And perhaps you're, you're hearing a little bit of the, the frustration about the difficulty in rallying what are the issues that we're trying to address and in what period of time. So we, we're here for you. We're here to do that analysis. But we really can't do that analysis on the, on the fly at the city council meeting.
I appreciate, uh, your feedback. Anything, uh, Councilman Member Hamilton?
Uh, well, you know what? I want to make sure we're done on that, on that topic. I, I made my comment, but it was specifically about that while we were discussing that, but I had other comments. It's just, okay?
Please proceed.
So my whole, my whole position on going to district elections is, has been from the beginning for me that that's something that I want, that I, that I think San Bruno would, would benefit from. I don't necessarily think that that's something that would, I would want to do now, given the many, many, many other things that we have uh, uh, before us, but I don't see that we also, that we have much of choice. Um, you know, we're being mandated by the, by the the outside forces to make, to, to make this move now, which is, I think, a, a bit unfortunate. This is something I, I would want us to get other, other things in our house in order, um, first before attacking this, but we don't have a choice. So, um, I'm in, in, I'm in favor of, of moving ahead. I'm also just, I'm, I'm incredulous to, 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 to read when I was, when I was reading the, the staff report that it was even being considered that twenty, that twenty twenty was a possible date to move to them. Given all work that would need, that needs to be done. And you guys were talking about it in March of twenty twenty, you know, even, you know, before COVID and all that, um, changed everything. That there was a possibility that you, it was gonna happen in November, it's never gonna happen. Given, get, you know, I mean, it, maybe that's a benefit of hindsight, but, um, it's gonna be a lot of work between, between now and um, twenty twenty-two. And I think we need to, I think we need to, um, get the, the vendor on board and start moving ahead with it so that we can make, make those deadlines.
For my, um, self, I just want to be clear, to my knowledge, we have not been forced. We have not received a letter. We have not been required. we have not received a letter, we have not been required. It was staff saying, let's be a little proactive, let's not get, I'm going to call it what it is, a $30,000 letter that says, we believe these are these findings, and you don't meet the criteria, and you need to go to districts or apply to the court, bottom line. And I know I forwarded something to the city attorney today that got from a city down south, and I really didn't, he hasn't had time to go through it, and I haven't either, but it was interpretation, I think it's still going into a higher court, honestly. So, but anyway, I just wanted to be clear, I think that's why all of that went up too, was to kind of get that. And like you said, with all of this going on the staff and the COVID situation that kind of tipped it off. Other comments or questions from my colleagues? Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I just want to be clear then, because I did, I'm going to, I am going to push back a little bit, because I did watch that March 10th and the March 24th meeting. And there was a request for more information. There was a presenting, I think, a public comment from Aras Hanan, there was another one from Plymouth, and there was another one from the Center for Election Science, the Chair Felix. They all talked about this other option. And in one of the areas that I did specifically express I wanted to know more about before we automatically select district elections was, what are these other options? And none of that has been presented tonight.
Sorry, city manager.
To be, to clarify, were you talking about the, I believe it was proportional representation?
The city manager, did you have your hand up or?
It is my understanding that those other options are related to a Charter City and a different electoral method, not district elections. But what I recall is that the action before council that night was to approve the work with National Demographics, so all of the analysis and options could be presented to the city council. In 2020, the election was to not proceed with that work, and so that work was not done. And so if we are going to go down the path to analyze the potentiality of district elections, analyze all of the various options with regards to district elections, some of which may relate to a Charter City, we have to engage in the work to do that. And the work to do that is the scope of work with the National Demographic Corporation. And that's why we have the item that is before the city council tonight, to do that work. It's not a authorizing the NBC contract, it's not a guarantee that the city will transition to district elections. It's authorizing the work to be done to prevent the variety of options to the city council to make that decision and to make the other decisions that may or may not have an impact on a Charter City or a other voter-approved process.
And I think you made a similar comment, if I recall, and you had said that we may, that we may need to actually get another consultant to come in to do that work, to compare. And that was since last year. And this particular consultant specializes in districting. And I don't know that there are other districts that have done proportional representation, but I know that there is what appears to be somewhat of a think tank who has an entirely different method that I would really like to learn more about.
Okay, well, I think it, so A, we have an action, whether to confirm a date, whether to adopt a resolution for the 46,000. I've heard kind of a few things here from colleagues. And also, Councilmember Mason brought up about this other option that some members of the community or public and others have brought up. But is that a consensus that the council wants this other information as well? Because obviously, I think that's what Attorney Zafarano was saying, you know, we need the direction, we need the guidance, can't do it on the fly, which is correct. Councilmember Hamilton, I see your mic is on.
Well, this might have just been, I'm getting a little foggy on it now. Is this vendor that we're entering, that we're proposing entering into contract with qualified to bring us options like proportional representation? Or would that need to be subbed out to another vendor? Or do we even know that, or do we even know the answer to that question?
Proportional representation in city council elections is something that NBC is qualified to help advise on. There was a entity that came to the March 24th meeting that Councilmember Mason is right, is a think tank that has positions on and ideas about how to do proportional representation. We can look into that think tank or that method and bring forward options to the city council with regard to if and how proportional representation would work. That may involve entering into contract with the vendor that came in March of 2020 or someone else. At this point, I honestly do not know the answer to that question. What I will rightly tell you is that post the March 24th meeting, the action from city council was to delay work on this until, until, to not work on this in 2020, but initiate work and that can be done so the city council could make a decision if the city was going to district elections in '22, which is why we're here today. And so all the work and analysis, including looking at proportional representation, was not done. And that was the action of the majority of the city council. It is true that Councilmember Mason talked about and brought up proportional representation at that meeting. And it is something that, should the city council want us to look into, should there be a desire to bring that back, we will absolutely do that. It is something that when we have that meeting in July with NBC and we talk about the options and start to envelop ourselves in this work, we can talk about it at that point. But until we really launch the effort, all of the various components and other items connected to district elections have been done, because the effort hasn't begun.
And city attorney, I'm going to, your mic is off, so I'm going to assume you don't have anything to add, but seeing you makes me gravitate to ask you.
Sorry, no, I think the city manager said it well. I think this action is an action that needs to precede any other discussions or actions, because you can't really get anywhere unless you do the initial demographic analysis.
Okay, well, you've heard from staff, council, and the presentation. What's the pleasure of the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution appropriating $46,000 from the General Fund to enter into a contract with National Demographics Corporation for districting services and bringing other options for our elections.
Okay, if the motion was clear, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion made and seconded. The city clerk, are you clear on the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Believe so. I will do roll call vote. Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
I apologize for clarification then, so the way that Councilmember Hamilton just read it, then it's like an amendment to the existing resolution, because it brings other options, is that right?
That was my intent, that was my intention.
He added language.
Specifically districting services, so I wanted to make sure to include those other options.
He added, he added to it.
As long as it includes the other options, then I'm a yes.
So you're a yes? Okay, thank you. Continue, I'm sorry, city clerk.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye. Thank you very much, city clerk. City manager, does that give you, and we're city attorney enough direction and?
Let's clear direction, we will enter into contract with NBC to begin the work, have an internal staff kickoff meeting with the contractor, and then return to the city council for a number of critical decisions about the project timing, stall, and other components.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to, oh, we're still on the conductive business, we're going to move on to item B, city clerk.
Item 6B, receive the city manager's proposed budget for fiscal year 2021-22 and staff presentations on the Enterprise and Internal Service Funds Budget Hearing 1.
Good evening, once again to the council. I'm here to present the proposed budget. We did have a meeting last Tuesday where the city council received an in-depth presentation of the city manager's proposed budget, as well as provided direction. The goal of tonight is not to recap all of that information that we went through in three hours on last Tuesday, but it's to conclude a part of that presentation that we did not have time to get to, as well as give a high-level overview of the proposed budget with the note that there was directions from city council that we will be returning some revisions to the proposed budget. So objectives, as I said, is to continue those discussions. I received the presentation on the city's Enterprise and Internal Service Funds. We have a number of department directors and staff here to support those conversations. And again, as always, we would like you to ask questions and provide direction regarding the proposed budget. Should you have questions as we go through the presentation, please feel free to ask them. We are covering a lot of information, and what we've done in the past, which I think has been successful, is that we pause after every section to ask questions. And if city council members have a burning question on a particular slide, we pause and address that question, I think that that has been helpful. The agenda for tonight is, we will provide a highlight of the overall budget presentation that's provided on June 1, and then the other components that we talked about, shared by the internal service. A budget development process, it is important to note that the city manager's budget instructions to departments was to maintain status quo budgeting with enhancements. Only the most needed enhancements and aligned to a city council priority focus area. Our departments initiated or begun the budget with a baseline that was maintaining current operations. Increases to the baseline were really limited to inflationary items, things outside the city's control, and again, enhancement requests aligned to a city council priority focus area, and also aimed at meeting our reserve policy targets. What's on the screen is the series of four public meetings that we have on the proposed budget. We are here tonight for the second meeting. Our very next meeting will be tomorrow night, where you receive a presentation of the proposed budget, as well as what's not shown on the screen, and you'll receive an update based on the changes that you, that we talked about on June 1. Proposed budget discussion highlights. So overall, the proposed budget for next fiscal year, which is a July fiscal year, July 1, 30, this total city budget, all funds, is $193 million. So that is the proposed budget in all of our funds, that includes our sewer, water, and air price funds, as well as our general fund. Our general fund, which is oftentimes referred to as the city's general checking account, is $51 million. Their total of 246 full-time FTE positions in the baseline budget. And there are over 100, 104 capital improvement projects that are within the budget for staff to work on. I will tag team this presentation with our finance director, so I'll turn it over to our finance director. Shinji-san, to take us through the next few slides with regard to our general fund summary, revenues, and highlight. Shinji?
Thank you, Jamal. Shinji-san, finance director, city mayor, and one of the council members. And what we can talk about is the general fund summary and then some other financial highlights. So this slide is giving you an overview of the general fund budget for the next year. As you can see, we're expecting the general fund operating, general fund revenue to amount of $50.5 million next year. And that is slightly behind on expenditure, expenditure is going to be at $51.1 million. We're expecting a deficit about just shy of $600,000. At the end of the fiscal year, the fund balance is ordered by $1.976 million. This is our baseline budget, no enhancement has been included in this budget. Next slide, please. As we all know, general fund revenues are made of a variety of tax revenues, including property tax, sales tax, hotel tax, also known as the TOT tax, the vehicle license tax. And then there are some other departmental charges, and then transfers of other revenues also make the whole pie of general fund revenue. Expenses side, majority of the expenditure from the department at that point come from safety services, in fire and police departments. And the next biggest department budget is the community service, they're taking about 14%. General administration is made up of a variety of departments, including city manager, council, city clerk, city council, finance, HR, and then IT. So this is another log of our general fund revenue and expenditure. So we talked about this before, this is a look at looking at the general fund revenues from the operations standpoint of view. So at the end, at the beginning of next fiscal year, we're expecting to have a general fund balance of about $2.6 million. And then we're expecting that operating revenue from general fund, excluding any kind of fund transfers, will be $49.9 million. And expenditure, of course, will still be at $51.1 million. So the operating surplus fund deficit would actually be $1.2 million. So our fund balance without any transfer at the end of next fiscal year will be right $1.4. In our proposed budget, we're proposing to transfer $600,000 from measure G to keep the fund balance of general fund to $2 million, so that it will be in line with our policy targets of a $1.5 million.
And I'll just add here that recognizing this comment from members of the city council that that transfer from measure G be aligned to specific funding items within the city operations, or to how the allocation was in the current fiscal year, what we did here evidently with just a measure G transfer to the general fund, and so we are.
Here I would like to give some highlights on general fund revenue. Property tax is to increase moderately with the housing market in top. Sales tax will increase about 11% when economic activities increase after the state fully opens. TOT will increase about 72% from this card fiscal year, but it's still more than half behind the pre-covid level. Vehicle license fees will be 9% lower as law schools are commerting from basic schools. So this is a log by numbers, as was I just highlighted before. All in all, with all these tax and major taxes fees, we're expecting 2020, 21, 22 proposed. we're expecting 2020, 21, 22 proposed revenue budget of $32.1 million from property tax, sales tax, TOT, vehicle license fee, car room fees, and this is like that. So on expenditure side, we're seeing some pressures, you know, writing pressures on energy costs that's just new. That is not new. We have been experiencing several years in a row. And we also know that health and other insurance costs are on the rise. And we are also facing uniannual negotiations. Our contracts are to expire and end at this calendar year. The status quo baseline budget means review staffing, limited ability for enhanced facility and infrastructure maintenance, and significant backlog of capital projects still remain. We don't have any, we don't have an easy decision made even in this year's session. General fund, this is the slide of the general fund expenditure broken down by department. And as you can see, general government, that's the general administration, is about $5.89 million next year. Police and fire is going to be slightly over $31 million in total. And then there is 3.7% from public work, three little over $3 million from CED, and 7.8 million from community services. And with some non-departmental adjustments, the total of general fund expenditures will be $51.1 million. Long-term look, we're expecting general fund to gradually improve in over the next few years. Hopefully, with the increased economic activities, we'll see a general fund will make, will really take off by the year of fiscal year 2024, 25. Of course, we have a lot of assumptions, put it into this long-range look. We need to, we're, you know, with more elevated economy, we may revise our forecast in the next couple of years. So in the, in conclusion, general, we expect the general fund revenue to, general fund fees to gradually increase in tax revenues. We are taking a conservative assumption for development projects. Personnel costs in this long-range look will increase about 35%. There is no significant service annual changes in this long-term range outlook. We, in the future years, we're assuming some fund reduction will be required to balance the budget. Challenges we are facing in this fiscal year, as I had mentioned, we have a back-end plastic bargaining agreements to expire at the end of calendar year. And we all know the stormwater enterprise fund is facing negative, facing a deficit at the end of this next fiscal year. City naturalizing enterprise fund, the deficit will increase. We need more investment in personnel and in IT maintenance and investments. And also, we need some funding. We need more funding in committed vehicles. We, based on the city's fiscal budget policy, we have some targets set out for the reserve general fund. We are hoping to get a $1.5 million on reserve. Based on the proposed budget, we are hoping with additional center on measure G, of course, that's, we're hoping the general fund balance will be $1.976 million. But I know this is in a purview of the council. We are working on this number for the general fund. The general fund reserve may change depending on the direction provided by the council. We do have a general fund reserve outcome that's really our true thing outcome, where our target is to have 25% of the budget expenditures. We're only going to have $12.39 at the end of this fiscal year. I believe that is behind our target, the target of 12%, 25% is about $12.89. So we're about $500,000 behind. And general fund, the capital reserve is expected to have a $5 million goal. And in that next fiscal year, we're going to add a reserve reserve bound at $9.4 million. And city manager has mentioned before, this is had both. A major, a big proportion of this $9.4 million includes a mutual payment of $4.5 million. So these are, that money has been earmarked and designated for a project we are expecting to use in the next couple of years. Emergency disaster fund, we have a target of $3 million. And the ECU will be hot by the end of next fiscal year. We expect that that balance will be long $2.7 million. Although we, from the last, previous slide, the total of the four reserve I talked about amounts to about $26.39, $23.4 million. These are the unrestricted reserves that they actually have. However, we have some significant deficits in the enterprise funds and stormwater enterprise. The deficit adds to about over $15 million. So in reality, our unrestricted reserve is only going to have about $10.7 million. And then we also have about $3.399 in capital reserve. All in all, the net general fund reserve is just around $14.1 million.
Okay, so with regards to the proposed enhancements, we had a significant discussion last Tuesday on this, there's a total of $3.25 million of proposed enhancements. The feedback we heard from the city council was that the position recommendations for measure G, consider moving those or a significant amount of those to the American Rescue Act funds as well as take a look at the other expenditures out of measure G and give significant preference to measure G revenues for rolled away expenditures. So the enhancement requests are currently under revision, and we will, at the beginning of tomorrow's workshop, present a revision to bill enhancement requests. The bulk of tonight's conversation was due to be dedicated to the enterprise funds and financial operating summaries so we can get through those slides. And so why don't I pause here and ask if there are any questions from the city council? I know we had a three-hour presentation on Tuesday, but if there are any additional questions, happy to take them now before going into the next section.
Any questions from colleagues? And just for myself, city manager, what you said was that is under revision tomorrow, that would be shown. I had some comments on that, just general comments, not specific, but maybe it's best waited for tomorrow. Would that be fair?
Mr. Mayor, up to you. Happy to take your feedback now or tomorrow.
Well, I think it's in general and going forward, I mean, in regards to specific measure G. So maybe I should wait to see, and then I can encompass all of those, my personal comments, and then just on this budget and moving forward. So, so we don't get ahead of that. Any questions? I'm seeing none at this point, so if you wouldn't mind proceeding.
Okay, so the next section is our interim public works director, Haywon Ritchie. That will provide an overview of the enterprise department of our water division. That is within public work. So interim director Ritchie.
Thank you, city manager, Gorgon. Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members. My name is Haywon Ritchie, the city's interim public works director. I do have the three next enterprise funds, which are water, wastewater, and stormwater. So overview of the water, there are 18.20 full-time employees. They consist of one water system conservation manager, maintenance service manager, water quality technician, two lead maintenance workers, and eight maintenance workers. And this fund also supports various managers and supportive staff, including secretaries and analysts. This division ensures the safe and efficient production and delivery of potable water. It manages water conservation programs, responds to urgent community needs, conducts routine maintenance, and ensures regulatory compliance. Next slide, please. So this chart shows a 5% annual rate increase through this year, which is 20, this year 20, 21. The blue bars are fund balances. The green, and I will note that it does go into the red. Sorry, which year is that? That is year 24, 25 forecast. But I will comment on that in the next slide. The green line is revenue. The black dash line shows the combined operating and capital expenditures. The 2021 budget includes carryover of anticipated projects into the next year. Sorry, the 2122 budget includes carryover into these projects. There are larger-scale projects that are anticipated in the out-years, including pump station and tank replacement and installation projects, along with continued main replacement projects in the avenues. So that is the peak in the expenditure line that you see. Next slide, please. This slide shows, what I would like to do first is focus on the second and third. So if you look at the revenues and the expenditures, largely they remain fairly flat. And then similarly with the operating surplus, there remains fairly consistent. There are debt proceeds that are shown in the next slide after the subtotal, as well as CIP. So what the CIP numbers show is that in 2021, it's estimated about $6.5 million worth of capital improvements were made to the water system. The next year's proposed budget also includes $14.5 million. Previous, this amended budget had substantially more capital projects. There are some carryforwards because larger projects do carry some larger project balances. However, staff did make an effort to, oh, sorry, staff did make an effort to defund some of those projects that they're in design and to fund some of those in the later out-years. I could keep going. So notable budget items include the cancellation of 5% water rate increase in the next fiscal year and budgeting for a new water rate study is included. Accomplishments include completing the citywide water main leak assessment survey, repairing 105 main break, water main breaks, beginning the water master plan update, as well as implementing urban water management plan. Completed various annual reporting to the state water resource and control board. Completed annual cross-connecting survey in conjunction with San Mateo County Environmental Health Services. Removed sediment and cleaned interior of four water tanks. And reviewed and implemented recommended safety, security features at water facilities. Key initiatives include completing those plans, completing the water structure risk and resilience assessment, updating the drinking water emergency response plan, removing sediment from the remaining four tanks, and developing long-term preventive maintenance programs. Staff performs pump station and water well maintenance and inspections, water quality sampling and testing, proactive and reactive maintenance repairs to all distribution piping, customer service response for private property repair issues and service needs, water meter installations, and working with contractors when switching over to new water system piping from new rehabilitation projects. Next slide, please. Next is the wastewater division. This division consists of 15.75 FTEs. It consists of one maintenance service manager, two mechanics, one lead maintenance worker, and eight maintenance staff. This fund also supports managing and supportive staff, administrative staff. Responsibilities include sewer collection system operations and maintenance, responding to urgent community needs and regulatory compliance. Staff performs pump station maintenance inspections, proactive gravity cleaning, CCTV inspections, customer service response for private sewer linals, manhole inspections, and planned or reactive repairs to the gravity collection system. The city's GIS is also updated to reflect system changes. Next slide, please. So similar to the chart we saw for water, this shows 5% annual rate increases through this year, which is fiscal year 2021. The blue bars are fund balances, all shown in the positive. Green line is revenue. The black dash line shows combined operating and capital expenditures. The budget includes carryover and anticipated projects, which is the spike that you see. Larger-scale projects are anticipated in out-years, including ongoing main replacement projects in the avenues, as well as pump station replacement and forced main replacement projects. Next slide. This table shows that operating revenues are largely flat. Operating expenditures go up, and this is mostly caused by interdepartmental allocation increase. There are one-time larger-scale CIP projects, such as pump station and forced main replacement projects and extensive sewer main replacements in the out-years. And similar to the water fund, we see the debt proceeds as well as the CIP. So in fiscal year 2021, is estimated about $7.4 million worth of capital improvements were performed on the system. Notable accomplishments include, I think this one is a huge accomplishment, is that there's the lifting of the consent decree, which the city was under. This is no small feat. This was done with combination of operations and engineering staff having a rigorous program to correct the system and to execute multiple projects. We completed, the operations staff completed 576 video inspections, pipes, manholes, completed 31 mainline spot repairs, managed point-of-sale private sewer lateral inspections, and updated the city's geographic information system. Notable budget items include cancellation of the 5% water rate increase in this next fiscal year and budgeting for new wastewater rate study is included. Upcoming key projects include multiple sewer line replacements, as well as the Crestwood pump station improvements project. Next slide, please. Stormwater division. It consists of five maintenance workers and portions of managers and administrative support staff. Staff performs drain inlet cleaning, seasonal response to flooding, street sweeping, and response to San Bruno response. Next slide, please. This chart does show a structural imbalance in the stormwater enterprise fund. There's an existing stormwater fee where most property owners pay approximately $46 annual per parcel. This is not enough revenue to sustain ongoing operations, apartments, little loan equipment, and capital needs. The stormwater rate is assessed on the annual property bill, property tax bill, and the rate is $4.19, sorry, .964 cents per thousand square feet on the property with a minimum bill of just $46.16. There is an effort to, there's an initiative to, instituted a storm drainage and flood protection fee to help correct this balance. Similar to the other enterprise charge, the blue bars are showing revenue and the red bars are for negative fund balance. The black dash line include operating budget, but also CIP, project carryover, and projects. This, the reason that you see that spike in the expenditures is that this also includes various capital projects, including this five blast storm drainage repair that was funded with, that is funded with 1.2 million KOS grants, of which there is a local match grant, as well as I-283 regional stormwater capture projects, approximately 1.1 in EPA and state funding. There were also, I would like to note, urgent needs that occurred recently. The San Bruno Avenue hillside slope repair projects within Crestmore Canyon cost about $1 million for the city. And county park and Crystal Springs repair, this estimated cost about $450,000. And County Park and Crystal Springs repair, this estimated cost about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. These unanticipated costs do put pressure on the general fund reserve. Because what is not grant funded is supplemented with the general fund. Our regulatory landscape also just becomes more challenging. We have been installing trash capture projects, and we adopted a re-infrastructural plan that encourages the installation of buyer retention and public right of way. Staff worked hard to retain a positive fund balance by the end of this fiscal year. However, a negative fund balance is projected to commence the following year with no end in sight unless additional dedicated revenues come into this one. Next slide please. Again, total revenues fairly flat, as well as operating. There were increases due to internal metal allocations. There were some CIP and debt proceeds that showed the balance, and those are the ending fund balances for this year and the next fiscal year. Notable accomplishments include coordinating emergency response, the sustainability work at San Bruno Avenue, and working to repair a storm pipe failure near County Park in Crystal Springs. This does not, however, include the thirty million dollars in infrastructure improvements that are identified in this storm drain master plan. Staff, operation staff did work to coordinate multiple storm drain spot repairs, picked up trash and debris at one thousand twenty-three locations as of March twenty, twenty-one, two largest homeless encampments and two Caltrans lots. They maintained self-serve, the self-serve sandbagging station and completed approximately four thousand feet of culvert inspection. And that concludes my portion of the enterprise fund.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you very much for your report. I'm having a lot of trouble, and this could be, it's likely, because this is my first time doing this process through the budget. I'm having a lot of trouble reconciling the, the tables with the graphs. So it happened on all, on all three, the water, wastewater, and stormwater, where this graph implies what the revenues and expenditures are in each year, and then followed up by a table that showed completely different numbers. So I, I, I'm not understanding the way that these are constructed, and it's, and it's painting a wrong picture in my head when I'm looking at the graphs.
I might just, if you have finance assistance me with those, I wonder.
You can choose any of them, because it happened in all three.
Yeah, Mr. Ritchie, just, Mr. Hamilton, yeah, finish up and then, well, he was finishing, kind of giving you an example or two. Go ahead, Mr. Hamilton.
Yeah, I just, I just, I just want to see, it's like, for example, here on the wastewater enterprise, we see total operating revenues of almost eighteen million for, in the, in the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, and expenditures of ten million. We go to the, the graph for wastewater. The expenditures are up at thirty-four million, and the revenues are, I guess, down around the seventeen. So is this because of capital stuff?
Yes, yes, includes both capital.
Part of this budget, a part of this area of the budget, and that, and that happened on all, in all three enterprises.
Yes.
Okay. Really hard, it's really, it's really hard to follow because it paints, it paints a very different picture. At least in my head, what's, what's actually happening.
Councilmember Hamilton, what we can do in the future is add a revenue and expenditure graph that is solely operations. All of the graphs show the fund, because what it's intended to show is the overall health of the fund.
Sure.
Includes both operating and capital expenditures. But when you're, when we talk on the next slide, which is solely about, when you look at just the operating revenues and expenditures, that's not shown in the graph, and what we can do in the future is to add graph to all of these that several, that shows the fund health, but add a graph that, that just shows the interplay between operating, revenue, and expenditures.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, and Councilmember Hamilton, it, it is frustrating the first year or probably two of looking at these graphs, but it takes a while. Say, thank you, Director Ritchie. I, I caught that the stormwater staff are charging their time to San Bruno response. I haven't heard it directly that way. And so you're telling me that for all the pickups and the homeless encampment cleanup, that the funds were coming out of stormwater?
Let me go back to my notes. I do have Deputy Director Bosch, I was wondering if he could let into the room?
And I, and I guess my concern there is, I understand, street sweeping is stormwater, a direct connection, but maybe not some of the other bulkier pickups that, that's not going to go into the stormwater, like a sofa or a refrigerator that gets picked up, and perhaps the funds should not be charged to stormwater, but to something else?
I am wondering if I actually hold streets, actually.
Uh, Devon, Deputy Director, is Deputy Director Dennis Bosch, who oversees the stormwater. Dennis, will you address the councilmember's question and then I, I can tell it?
Yeah. Deputy Director Dennis Bosch, from the Department of Operations, good evening, Honorable Mayor on Council. Yeah, for San Bruno response, it is part of the streets. The, the problem is, is streets and stormwater are within one division when we're talking about the employees. So basically, when, when San Bruno response comes into the garbage complaints or advisements that you said, Vice Mayor Medina, streets staff go out and they take care of that, it is charged towards the appropriate fund. There are times where if, if something, you know, goes onto a storm drain, or if something, you know, depending upon San Bruno response, if there's flooding during, you know, inclement weather, then that, that can be, or is basically charged towards that. But in a sense, it's streets and stormwater personnel are of the same division.
Fine, thank you for that. Being in the same division, but of charging to different accounts. But, but I, I, I'll let staff figure that out, work that out a little bit. I have another question. For, for the future at some point, and not now, if council could be updated on the percentage of water and sewer mains that have been replaced so far, ongoing, since we've, we've been actively replacing our water and our sewer mains. If, if we could have an update, I know it's not very much considering the, the miles of, of water and sewer that we have, but it is still important, I think enough that we understand that there's a lot to do. A lot has been done, yet a lot remains to be done. Thank you.
I'm not seeing any more questions at this time?
So if we have no more questions, I'll invite City Net Services Director Sandeep Krishnamoody to present on the City Net Services, buddy.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. My name is Sandeep Krishnamoody. I'm the Director of San Bruno City Net Services. Here to present the budget for the coming year and the status of the fund. Can we go to the next slide? Yeah, City Net Services, in terms of an overview, has twenty budgeted full-time employees. It focuses on providing broadband services, along with, of course, television and voice-over IP, provides excellent customer care and support. It optimizes a delivery system, which is frankly kind of old. It has recently launched a Wi-Fi internet service, and it also provides commercial voice and data services, along with Channel One, which is our own program channel focused on local origination programming, including such events as this evening's presentations and council meeting. The long-range financial plan of City Net Services has us pretty much looking at being in the red through the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal years, except there is a gradual reduction in the amount being added to the load. The way the Cable Enterprise Fund adds balances is through three methods. Through capital investment, through financial payments made on behalf of City Net by the General Fund, and through the depreciation and amortization payments which carry over from past years. The point to note here is that the capital improvement projects for City Net was zeroed out in the nineteen, twenty, and twenty, twenty-one budgets, and remains in that status going forward, except for specially sanctioned projects funded from elsewhere. In terms of the twenty-twenty-one amended budget, our beginning fund balance was projected to be at fourteen point five zero nine or fourteen point six million, with operating revenues, which have been amended to nine point four million, slightly under that, and operating expenditures projected to end at nine point seven million. The deficit projected is two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, and the CIP for the router project was to be paid at the rate of three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, with an additional two thousand dollars and change, leading to a total of CIP debt proceeds and equipment totaling out to three hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred dollars. This would have left the ending fund balance at fifteen million, one hundred and sixty-four thousand. The actual expended, estimated expenditures are supposed to be at nine point three six four million, and the point to coil out here is that it was originally projected to be at nine point nine million. We have brought down this amount by about six, six hundred thousand, primarily due to an eight hundred thousand dollar savings in television content expenses. We project to end the year at a slight surplus of about thirty-five thousand, with ending fund balance of fourteen point four seven six million. The point to note here is that the debt fund proceeds that were to be paid by City Net is now going to be paid by the General Fund, and in terms of account or handling by accounts and finance, that amount is not shown against the loan balance for this year, but it will be next year when City Net is projected to be in a position to actually pay the money. For twenty-one, twenty-two, projected revenues are at nine point eight million, expenses projected at nine point four, slightly under nine point five million, leading to operating surplus of projected three hundred and thirty-one thousand. The CIP debt proceeds and equipment, as I mentioned before, is to be paid by City Net, and the total here would be four hundred and forty-three thousand. So that would lead to a slight increase, or what seems to be a slight increase, in the loan balance, which would end out at fourteen point five eight eight million. So to call to the point regarding estimated actual operating expenditures for this year, it was nine point nine million in the original budget, and we have brought that down to nine point three six four, and are pretty optimistic about ending there, thanks to having saved eight hundred thousand in television content expenses and additional savings in pretty much every major spending area of the budget. Can we go to the next slide?
Yes, Andy, I just want to point out for council that eight hundred thousand, you know, they annualize savings somehow. I think we started receiving that midway through the year, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. We, we accomplished that through viewership debt-based drops of Crown Four and Univision, which saves us twenty-five thousand a month, starting in January twenty, twenty-one. And we also have additional savings accruing to us through television subscriber losses and also through renegotiations of certain other contracts. Notable budget changes, service level challenges. We plan to have an IPTV revenue stream coming into play, starting in the, in the next fiscal year. And what this means is our television business would essentially have both a traditional delivery method for a while and new IPTV-based delivery method, which would be based on apps on Android and iOS and other formats. We propose to fund this through our operating rooms. The, one of the continuing challenges remains the aging fleet of our vehicles. Since we have zeroed out the CIP budgets to achieve as much of fiscal stability as we can, the youngest vehicle we currently have in our fleet is from two thousand and seventeen, and they are aging with every passing year. The equipment across the entire system is in various stages of obsolescence. The hybrid fiber coax plant was, as an example, put in place in nineteen ninety-eight. And while there have been upgrades to hidden equipment at various points in time, most of the equipment is old and is being replaced on an as-needed basis, but it begs improvement in terms of overall system upgrade to fiber itself. A key initiatives for the enterprise going forward is to identify funding, continue planning efforts for fiber to the home, and upgrade Channel One to high definition. This is included in the budget to be funded by the American Rescue Plan Act. Some operational statistics that we have, that the enterprise has navigated during the pandemic. In terms of internet usage, our average monthly or peak monthly usage pre-pandemic was eighty gigabytes, and that's gone up to over seventeen, an increase of over a hundred percent. Our television usage has also gone up by over a hundred percent to about twenty-five million minutes viewed a month. In our call center, we have been experiencing on an average about three thousand calls a month. Starting about two months ago, we have noticed a trending in, in the number of calls answered as opposed to calls abandoned, and in terms of an improvement. This is most probably also due to the fact that we opened our office and front lobby to customers starting the seventeenth of May. So undoubtedly, we continue getting better as time passes. We have had two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars of unpaid subscription bills, and while it's not yet an uncollectible debt, we have been taking some proactive measures in this regard by having a new ACSR call and talk to these customers on a one-on-one basis, resulting in a collection of about thirty-two thousand dollars to date of this total. And also have been referring customers who have some difficulty in making payments to state and federal utility bill assistance programs. One point to note here is that we have been approved as an eligible provider in the Emergency Broadband Benefit Program launched by the FCC and are listed on their website. and are listed on their website as of today. So we are now in a position to direct customers who have difficulty making broadband payments to sign up through the Federal Communications Commission for this benefit, which would have us being able to offer them up to fifty dollars of broadband benefits per month per household. There is more to come in this regard on our website and through other sources of announcing the program to San Bruno's residents. Subscriber trends, we lost five hundred subscribers from March of twenty-twenty through April of twenty-one. While this seems like a pretty high number, it's generally in line with the loss trends that are being experienced across the nation, coming out at slightly under eight percent. While it's never good to lose a subscriber, rekindle a subscriber, what we have noticed is that there has been a corresponding shift to internet users amongst our subscriber base, or those that are left of it. In the seven thousand homes that we currently serve, we have over ninety-five percent of subscribers who get the internet through us. What this means is these are slightly higher-margin subscribers, and they feed into an improvement of our operational balance between revenues and expenses. In terms of the new rate card, which we launched in February of two thousand and nineteen, we have, we have now, we now have thirty-seven percent of our subscribers on it, and this again implies a better operating margin, so we actually end up making money on a per-subscriber basis. Can we go to the next slide? In terms of future City Net study session, staff is planning an updated study session on City Net, and the current timing is quarter of one of next year, the next fiscal year, sometime in August or September. This is based on several works in progress, which include such things as the finalization of the City Net Revenue Study, which was undertaken by a consulting firm, and a business plan audit of the fiber business plan, as recommended by the city auditor. And we also include several efforts underway to research federal and state grants. There's been a spate of announcements, announcing infrastructure band grants available from the federal level to build out broadband throughout the country, and we are exploring ways and means to apply for these grants, if possible at all, find ways of securing funds from the federal government, both for our own footprint and also to help expand our service outside the San Bruno City Net area. Which brings us to the last point. We have had some exploratory discussions in terms of regional fiber and internet extension. This brings me to the end of this section on City Net. I'll be happy to answer questions again.
Question from colleagues? First, we'll go to Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you very much for this presentation. It's been difficult, and the efforts to control costs, cost is appreciated. I have a revenue question. In the revenue summary on page two hundred fifteen, where does the city pay, City of San Bruno pays City Net Services? How much, how much does it cost to provide internet service to our city?
Okay. As of last year, it costs the city twenty-one thousand dollars, sorry. It costs the city the cost of one, of a one-gigabit circuit, and it's an internal payment between IT and the city. So the IT department pays City Net twenty-one hundred dollars a month for one gigabit wholesale connected.
Is that on, is that on any of these line items in, and we can, I can get this later? I just was going through and...
It would not be separately called out. It would be part of the internet revenues.
Okay, because the internal service allocations and interdepartmental charges is almost nine hundred, nine hundred thousand?
That's the outflow from City Net for being a department within the city. So this is what we provide to the pool. The city collects to defray costs across the city services, across the spectrum of services it provides.
And just for a relative value that City Net provides to our city, could you estimate what it would cost to obtain the internet, internet, internet service from an outside vendor?
It would be several times what we charge the city. It's difficult to put a number because that number seems to keep moving upwards. But if, if all the services were to be obtained on a commission basis, it would be many times higher, and I base this on AT&amp;T's per-business line charge of about nine hundred dollars for one gigabit service to one small business. So we don't have one small business. We have a city with many departments to serve.
Understood, and thank you for being able to pull that math really, really quick. And as for looking at your target in the number of households increasing from seven thousand to seven thousand one hundred and fifty, where, where is that coming from?
It's coming from primarily the new launch of IPTV services that we have in position right now. It's going to take several months to actually get that service in shape and launched. But the reason we believe it's going to add services as opposed to the general environment of losing traditional television customers is because of the additional functionalities we seek to provide through Roku devices, through iOS and Android apps, and also because of the fact that we would still be one of the, if not the only player in the city to be able to offer live sports and news coverage.
And what was the marketing budget?
The marketing budget is...
Pretty low.
It's pretty low. It's spread into a few buckets. We have an other services budget of about sixty thousand dollars. We have community promotion of about ten to fifteen thousand, and we tend to keep at a low profile in our outreach, simply because a lot of the marketing efforts we could undertake in terms of mass media usage would be very inefficient, given that we serve only one zip code. If you were to serve a broader footprint, it might make more sense to take ads in the likes of a Sanitier Journal or something that has a broader reach.
And, and when staff are, I'm sorry, when a new, new customer signs up for water, are they handed a brochure, or is there any promotion at that moment?
We, we have brochures available at the counter when people come to sign up at the city itself. We have started the practice at the suggestion of our city manager to place welcome packets in new developments, but we have not had a consistent program to offer this in every packet given to every water customer.
Right, and I think that's something that, it's hard to really expand your business if you're not going to do some promotion.
Completely agree.
And however, however, we can accomplish that, we have to give you the budget to do, to do so.
I would only caution on one aspect. One, I have my eye on the fiscal control aspect of things to keep it, to keep costs under control, and two, on the relative inefficiencies of going very broad in our marketing campaign, given the small footprint we serve. And the third being that since we are now currently in the process of switching horses, so to speak, in television delivery from traditional to IPTV, we have taken a cautious approach towards doing anything right now as opposed to going out with more of a, more of a push soon as we launch IPTV.
Great. Thank you very much.
Mr., through the mayor, if I can just add on to that. These are significant conversations, and we've had some internal discussions. And so Director Kishmerstani did mention the door hanger program that we launched internally, and begun a door hanger package for some of the new developments. What we are also exploring internally, connected to City Net, but also general city services, is a welcome package that can be provided to new people that move into the community. And currently, we're exploring ways to do that. We talked about when people set up a new utility account, but oftentimes, that's also too late, because by the time you're setting up your waters or, and you're moving from a place where maybe you had AT&amp;T, you may just port over your AT&amp;T. And so we're, we're, we want to explore partnerships with our local realtor offices. So when people are buying new homes, they can be informed of, if you're hiding in San Bruno, there is San Bruno City Net, as well as partnering with our NDU, our multi-unit developments, where they have internal information when they are leasing out a unit that they provide to potential tenants. And so we're exploring those, partly it's City Net, but it's also a sort of welcome to San Bruno package that would have the latest recreation guide, as well as a, a general brochure about all things San Bruno.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, Director Krishnamurthy, for your, your presentation. I've got two questions. The first one is, in the, in the introductory letter to the budget, it was stated that the twelve point four million dollar Fiber to the Home project would require the full funding upfront. And I'm, I don't, I'm curious as to why that would be, and why we would be able to phase it in by neighborhoods or whatnot. Why would the, why would the twelve point four million be required all upfront in order to do fiber, fiber to the home throughout the city?
Well, the way the plan has been envisaged is it's a fairly quick rollout, and given the order cycles that are necessary to get the equipment in place for each successive phase, and there are seven phases, we would have to have quite a bit of money contained within the twelve point four million to be committed fairly quickly into the early months of the build-out. The total build-out timeline is for twenty-four months. Most of the money to secure materials would be consumed pretty much by month fourteen or sixteen. And then the remainder would just be a deployment period for those funds.
Okay, thank you. And then my question has to do with subscribers on the old rate cards. What, what do we do to proactively, do we do anything to proactively coax people off of those old rate cards and onto the current ones? And if, and if we aren't doing anything, you know, is it, is it on the roadmap to start charging them?
I'll start by addressing the second point, which is, is it on the roadmap? And the answer is yes. And the reason the answer is yes is because of the planned launch of IPTV services. We have a lot of customers in the old rate card who are television-heavy consumers and not as much of the internet. So we want to be sure we have a plan in place where we can tell them, you can move this package and actually end up saving fifteen dollars a month or twenty dollars a month, whatever the final number is, as compared to your current price. So that's one. The second is, given the pandemic and the level of TV usage increasing amongst our customers, we have not gone out and made a concerted push to get them off of the rate card. Because, again, it comes back to the point about launching IPTV. If we get them off the old rate card, what do we get them onto if they're not heavy consumers of the internet? And our new rate card is internet-led, so it's, it essentially takes the internet. It packages it with local television channels, and it may certainly appeal to the, to the working-family demographic and to the younger people in San Bruno, but to our older customer base, of which we have a fair sample, may not find it that attractive. That's the reason we have not done very much till now.
Okay, great, thank you.
There are questions from colleagues? Not seeing any hands up at this time. I'm sorry, Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I'm just curious if you, if there are demographics as far as which, you know, maybe each groups that are, that have San Bruno cable or using San Bruno internet. I'd be curious to see the demographics.
We can, we can try and get stuff to you. What I can say off the top of my analysis over the, or several recent periods is we're starting to skew a little lower, but we're not seeing a big uptake yet in the younger demographic in San Bruno. Our subscriber base still tends to skew forty-five plus.
Okay, that's where I would piggyback off of what Councilmember Medina says about advertising. I also just wanted to say that, did you say at the beginning of your presentation that, was it Bilamunda, that you save twenty-five thousand dollars a month?
It's Univision and Crown Four.
Okay, wow.
Those two, those two collectively cost us twenty-five thousand dollars in content fees per month.
Okay. And then my last question was around the funds where people are behind on their bills. Is there, are there any services that are being shared right now with the residents of San Bruno, like through a mailer, through the city manager's newsletter? Not necessarily, I guess, upcoming because we're at the beginning of June, but to say if you got behind on your payments, here are some resources that are there to help you.
We actually got an approved letter mailed. Then we followed up with a second notice, and now we have a person calling one-on-one to coax people to call in and establish a payment plan, without which we have started downgrading people to different lower tiers of service, especially when it comes to television service. And the reason is, we are only a middleman in television content delivery, so while we may, or we incur a cost of almost a hundred dollars for a hundred basic subscriber, if it doesn't show up as a payment to us, it's a net loss of a hundred dollars.
But I mean, there, is there any assistance outside of a payment plan, which is directly with San Bruno? Like any additional assistance that's available through the state to help individual, or the county, to help individuals get up to date with their, with their payment plans?
Yes, there is. There's a state program which helps people who have trouble paying their rent and the utility bills get help from the state itself. And as I said during my presentation, we just qualified today to become an eligible provider in the Emergency Broadband Benefit Program established by FCC. And this allows each household to receive up to fifty dollars worth of internet connectivity on a monthly basis. And this program has about three point two billion dollars of funding for the whole of the United States and will last as long as there is money to be dispersed.
And just in addition to what the director said, the answer to has it been included in the city manager's newsletter is yes, as well as our social media posts. And what Sandeep mentioned, which is, we are, we know who are behind on their bills. At this point, we're doing dedicated outreach to those individuals to encourage them to apply for the state and federal utility payment assistance programs, which will help them out with utility deals, as well as if they're behind in rent. And so at this point, it's a dedicated outreach for those state and federal programs.
Any other questions from colleagues at this time? All right. Thank you, Director, for your report.
You're welcome.
The question here is, does the city council desire a break, which is why that slide was built in? We do have, I believe, thirteen additional slides left. If my memory and math is correct, yes, there is less. There's, it's almost sixty slides and we're on forty-nine. So we have less than that. We have about ten slides left.
What is your expectation on what the ten slides might take? Just give me a ballpark as far as time.
Sure. I, I think it is, it is a few divisions. It is our central garage, our building and facilities, and technology departments. I think the presentation of all those would be approximately twenty minutes. Questions from the city council, I have it not to guess.
I, I wasn't going to ask you to predict that. I wasn't going to ask you to predict that. No, just presentations, and I would say at this time, let's proceed, please.
Okay, so our internal service funds are the central garage, building and facilities, technology, and self-insurance. In this presentation, we do have the directors that are responsible for those divisions of central garage, building and facility, and technology, ready to present. The internal service fund balances that are shown above are for, they are operating fund balances. These are not the reserve fund balances for our garage, which cares for our vehicles as well as sleep. It is also not the reserve fund balance that covers building and facilities or technology. These are the operating fund balances. And then, we can step through these presentations, and the first up is central garage. Director Ricky.
A central garage overview. There are two mechanics, which also includes portions of management and support staff. Staff provide employees with operable and well-maintained vehicles by performing preventative maintenance and repairs. They also provide vehicle acquisition and disposal services, as well as support services. Next slide, please. Accomplishments include implementing new workflow and garage management software, including fleet service support portal, auction surplus vehicles, equipment, and reintroduce new fund source for equipment reserve, updated garage operating processes, streamlined parts ordering, improved interdepartmental communication. Strategic initiatives include improving tooling and part storage, reduce our plus, continuing to maintain and repair 146 service vehicles, researching fleet electrification and redo life cycles. I do want to note that some budget enhancement requests include stripping and requoting the garage bay floors with paint, et cetera, and toolbox and equipment storage and workstation. Baseline budgeting does mean that we're unable to restore prior budget cuts to supplies, contract repair, hazmat, and laundry services. Next division is building and facilities. Next slide, please. This division includes two maintenance technicians, one field supervisor, one custodial leader, and four custodians, in addition to portions of management and administrative staff. Staff performs facilities and building maintenance and repairs, proactive and reactive response to building repairs, and custodial cleaning of all city facilities, and overseeing implementation of the ADA transition plan. Next slide, please. Accomplishments include completing, completion of the moved division to public works, implementation of new work order facility maintenance management system and work request portal, managed installation of city hall video security camera systems. As well though, last year was, also other challenges, this division provided COVID response, including Plexigas barriers, air purifiers, temperature scanners, as well as office conversions at fire station, city hall, community services, and fireman's hall. Strategic initiatives include continued maintenance to repair of cities' buildings, continuing to implement ADA transition plan, installing HVAC at police fireman's hall library, as well as fire flow security. Additional budgets, augmentations, enhancements do include maintenance for library roof spot repairs, interior paint, pressure washing exterior walls and sidewalks at city facilities, HVAC roof contract maintenance repainting at Arbor Court, door and entryway and lock key service unit replacement. Statistical baseline budgeting has meant that there's limited ability for enhanced facility infrastructure maintenance, and CIP backlog remains. That concludes these two internal service charges.
Not seeing any hands up, so I'm going to say, why don't we proceed, please?
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the council. Sandeep Krishnamurthy, Director of CityNet and City IT, and here to present this evening proposed budget for City's IT Division. Can we go to the next slide? The IT Division of the city comprises three full-time employees per budget. Point to note here, we currently have two and a half-plus full-time employees, all of them extremely dedicated, very talented, and committed to the cause of IT in the city. The half-plus comes in the person of our new interim IT manager. We've had two failed recruitments to recruit a person on a full-time basis for this job and have finally chosen to go with this gentleman who is retired and retired, and is therefore not available full-time to the city. He does bring lots of talent and dedication to the job, and is very much busy with various IT projects at this time. The task of the City's IT Division is to manage and maintain the city's core IT infrastructure, maintain the network and data security, man the centralized service desk, manage business applications and management, and provide solutions management to pretty much every department across the city, manage the phones for the city's phone network, and also oversee the website development and administration on a day-to-day basis. Can we go to the next slide? Thank you. In terms of budgets, the amended budget for 2021 was $1,058,000, of which, the year is supposed to end at $1,050,000 spent, leading to a surplus of $7,600. For 2022, the departmental revenues are projected at 907, with expenditures projected at $1,113,000, leading to a, what seems to be a deficit of $206,000. And the first point in the notes, you will see that the CARES Act funds paid for securities enhancements in 2021 to the tune of $277,000. And the city plans to use, as appropriate, or for appropriate use projects, funds to be received from the American Rescue Plan Act to make up the deficit of $206,000 in 2022. The big projects on the annual for the City's IT Division include the city's website and the phone system, both of which are due to be changed in the coming fiscal, primarily because they're both at their end of support and end-of-life scenarios. New digital tools for conduct of the city's business continue to be enhanced or introduced based on providing greater functionality in the digital realm to the city's citizens, as well as to the city's departments. A notable example of that would be the ETrakit project, which involves CED, and finance, and IT. Many IT functions are moving to the cloud within the city for increased security, and these are adding to ongoing expenses, leading to the slight increase in budgeted amount requested for expenditures in 2022. At the same time, many IT systems also reaching end-of-life and end-of-support. I had just mentioned, the city's website and the phone systems are two of those prime examples. There are more systems coming into play as time passes on, and these will need to be changed up to be more modernized and up to date. Next slide. That brings me to the end of my section. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from colleagues at this time? Not seeing any hands, then if we could proceed?
So, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentations tonight. Again, the last, the next budget meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, and at that meeting, we will review the proposed CIP budget, as well as review revised recommendations related to enhancements based on City Council feedback last Tuesday. And so, that meeting is scheduled for tomorrow at 5:00 PM. So, that is Wednesday, good night.
Okay, if there's any members of the public that wish to ask questions or offer comments, you could please raise your hand at this time. I did want to take a moment and thank, there is a few folks from not just finance, but also in public works that are, have been on the line this entire time, being available, and they're the ones behind the scenes, putting this budget together, so we want to thank them very much. Seeing no hands up, I want to thank staff for their presentations and time, and from everyone staying here through the evening. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to item seven, comment from council members. We're going to go to first one, Mr. Tom Hamilton. The bullet point here is, discuss establishing a rotation for pairs on council members to hold virtual town hall meetings with the public on a quarterly basis, to provide residents with a more direct opportunity to interact with council members, discuss city issues, and ask questions.
All right, thank you. So, hopefully, this won't take long to discuss. And thankfully, the staff will appreciate this is an item that requires no staff input, no staff work, no budget. This is just something for the five of us. So, in, earlier this year, Councilmember Salazar and I co-hosted a virtual town hall over Zoom. It was well-attended, it was well-received, and I think it's something that we should, that we should continue to offer, to provide the public with an opportunity to interact with us more directly than they can do through these public meetings, through public comment, where we can't respond, or often can't respond directly, and just to kind of increase our engagement in the community. The, these town halls require little to no preparation, at least, at least I didn't prepare very much, Councilmember Salazar may have. But, it was just a matter of scheduling a Zoom, and getting the word out as much as possible for people to show up, and just being available. And, you know, we didn't run into any Brown Act issues, we didn't, you know, there was no, you know, it was really, you know, low-key, and not a lot of preparation required. And I really think that this is something that we should, that we should get a little bit more organized around, so it's not just, it's not just something that happens on the whim, when two of us decide want to do one, and it's something a little bit more, if we can come together on how to do it, and try to offer them maybe once a quarter. And also, I think it would be a great idea for us to, you know, informally vary the pairings, so it's not always the same two going together, and, you know, to show the public that we're one, that we're one unified team, you know, serving them. So, I wanted to throw that out there and get folks' comments, and maybe if we're super lucky, a commitment for another pair to host the next one.
I hate myself, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. What, I see the city attorney is here, so I'm not going to call on anybody at the moment. Call on the city attorney.
I'm going to stop doing this, I'm sorry.
Here comes a genie, Mr. Mayor.
So, only a very brief comment, and I'm sorry, I, you know, didn't know in advance, really, that this was going to be on the agenda, so I didn't have time to do a lot of research. But, I think there is a concern with respect to the Brown Act regarding varying the pairings. And the reason for that is because if you have two, two, and one, which is really the only way to do it without violating the Brown Act, if the first two people then incorporate, let's say, the last person as part of their two, then they really got three people potentially discussing and participating in a governmental decision. So, this issue has come up in the composition of a city council subcommittees, and the question has come up, can we rotate council members in and out of those subcommittees? And the answer is generally no, if they're ad hoc subcommittees, because otherwise, they're subject to the Brown Act. So, that's the only thought that occurs to me at the moment. I don't know if other cities, for example, have a model that do it one way or another, we could certainly look into that, but that was my only sort of immediate thought when I saw this.
So, given that, I mean, the, you know, there are, we don't have set agendas, and, you know, we just kind of follow the, follow the, what, the questions that the public are asking. So, you know, given that, that Councilmember Salazar and I did one of these in, I guess it was March, maybe it was February, I don't remember now. And if I were, if it rotated back around to me and I were to pair up with Linda on the next one, it would be, it's really the same, in my mind, it's really the same, the same kind of deliberation that we, that we need to do with ourselves to make sure that we're not violating the Brown Act. So, if, if there was something that we discussed, that we discussed in public, on the, something that I discussed with the public in the last town hall that I did, and then, you know, eight months from now, I'm in another town hall with Linda, and that same subject comes up again, maybe I would have to say, you know what, I can't talk about that one, and let Linda go. But, I, you know, I don't know. I just, I, I'm just trying to figure out a way for us to be able to engage with the public without, without falling, you know, without violating the rules, but also not being in, you know, so in this artificial bubble that we're in, that makes it impossible to have real engagement.
Right, one last comment, and then, obviously, councilmembers have thoughts, but just from a legal standpoint, obviously, each individual council member can meet with constituents as they see fit on an individual basis. The issue is doing it on a sort of two-and-two-and-one basis. And I understand your comment about you would have to self-regulate your discussions. I have to say that over a period of months, maybe longer, the potential for inadvertent violations are really, I think, quite high in that circumstance. You might have a meeting on January 1st with constituents with one council member, and then on December 31st with a different council member, and maybe the same constituent comes back and raises the same issue, and then all of a sudden, you have three people taking a position on a particular topic. So, I guess I, at the moment, can't advise in favor of that, but I'm happy to do some more research if the City Council does wish to, you know, to go ahead and implement this, I can come up with some advice for all of you about how to implement it so that you don't run afoul of the Brown Act. But, I do think I'm relatively confident that it cannot be a rotational sort of thing, but I really would need to look at that further.
Thank you, city attorney. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah, I was going to congratulate you, Tom, for Councilmember Hamilton, for coming up with this proposal. I see our cautious city attorney doing his job, trying to keep us from inadvertently breaking the Brown Act. So, I guess I can wait to hear. Linda and I did one, I don't know, maybe in January, I don't remember, but, yeah. Your effort to want to engage the community, they always can call, or send us an email as well, but it's great to have that Zoom meeting. It's kind of fun to kind of, to encounter somebody that you haven't met before that's going to ask you a question. But, let's wait and see.
Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I was going to say, thanks for putting this on the agenda, Councilmember Hamilton. I think my suggestion that I would have is that we have a listening session with the entire council as a study session. It's similar to a town hall, but we're listening to what residents want. And I do hear the city attorney, and maybe we focus on things that have already been voted on, so we can discuss them, if they're not going to come before us. voted on, so we can discuss them if they're not gonna come before us again. Um, but I've had a couple of, um, town halls, virtual town halls and, um, and I generally give more updates, um, to try to avoid Brown Act situations. So, um, that would be a suggestion.
Okay, um, Mr. Salazar and I haven't commented, uh, just for me quickly, I, I know one of the best ones, uh, I had actually, well, it was obviously before COVID, was in person and I have one scheduled next month, uh, and, and a part of town I haven't, I haven't been at, but it's, it's out, it's gonna be outside. But it was in regards to Scott Gray's app. And it was specific, specific topic, fifty people showed up, those I had not, had not seen before. So, and we were very, uh, it was very based on that one topic and then I stuck around after and if people wanted to talk about arcane or something different, then we did that. The one that I know, uh, was done, uh, with Dave Pine, what I, what I found interesting is everybody wanted that individual time because it was an individual situation to them and they really, it was more personalized and they didn't want a group setting. So that seemed to be, um, the example on, on the town hall, the only thing, because town hall to me means everybody. And as you know, we've had some of those meetings, right, at the Legion Hall, but we have to be noticed, we're all there, uh, the topics need to be listed, to my knowledge, um, so they can be more, um, driven in that way. And we've gone to, to listening campaigns or other things that we're just there, we listen, we're hearing the community on a topic that is gathering data or it's upcoming to, just to hear from folks. So, anyway, council member Salazar, do you have any?
No, I mean, I, I hadn't thought about, you know, the potential for the, the Brown Act violation and, uh, you know, when I, when I, uh, reached out to Tom to do this, you know, Laura Davis and I had done a couple and, uh, Tom ran you and I figured, okay, it's a nice way to sort of, uh, uh, come up with something that we can partner on. Uh, Marty and I worked on a subcommittee to, to come up with, uh, fees, uh, a few years back and, you know, we got to, uh, kind of work offline, uh, you know, and, and we just met down a grand leader and hashed out this thing on a Saturday morning. So I think those personal relationships are important. Uh, council member Mason and I are on the hard committee together, so we worked on a couple of projects there, worked on a couple of projects with the, the mayor. So it is nice to have those, but, um, you know, if, if doing these public meetings were that, that conversation, right, the conversations not controlled like, uh, council brought up, um, it is, it is risky. So, um, a- as much as I enjoy those, uh, uh, engagements with the community, it seems like the safest way to do it is for us to do them individually and then let's, uh, let's find a way to increase the pairings on subcommittees and projects that where we can each work together so we can get that, uh, that, that personal, uh, uh, you know, we can build on those relationships, which really helps in forming, uh, a cohesive council in, in the long run. So, um, those are my thoughts.
Okay, well, we, we thank, thanking Mr. Mr. Hamilton and like, uh, city attorney said, had he had a little more prep, maybe he could have, uh, brought some, some o- options to the table. So I, I, he's off camera now, so, uh, but we, we got his, we got his advice. I was just teasing, uh, the attorney and so we got some advice and like you said, you might be able to come back and, but have some time to look into it and then give some advice.
So one, one final comment on, on this. I'm, I'm going to assume that the answer is gonna be, don't do it, it's too risky. Um, so if, i- if, if then, you know, that, a- a- as, um, council member Salazar says that, that leaves us with having to do it solo, um, then I, then I would want to make sure that we are doing them and that we would, you know, maybe we, maybe we establish a rotation where we each do one each, you know, however many months or whatever, we can, we can hash that out, but just to make sure that they, that they happen, just to make sure that we are engaging and maybe we make a commitment to each other that if, if, if you, Mr. Mayor, are doing one next month, that all of us get the word out that, you know, that, 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 that's happening. Um, and, you know, just to try to make sure that everybody, you know, knows that we are trying to reach out and we're trying to engage with the community and provide these opportunities. That's, that's all I have to say.
Uh, thank you. Uh, seeing no other hands and, and thank you, uh, city attorney and thank you for, uh, what, what, uh, council member Hamilton is predicting, but we'll, we'll wait to hear a little bit more. And, and Mr. Hamilton, was there anything else, uh, um, for you this evening under council comments?
Uh, no, the only other thing that I was gonna bring up is already brought up earlier, which, which was the, um, the, um, the, the vaccination event through the, uh, the Sammont Town County Fair. It's an awesome opportunity for folks, so I might as well plug it again. If you haven't got, if you haven't got your vaccine, um, you can get your vaccine for free and bring, and bring your family, get into the fair for free and they'll even give you some, some free food and rides. So it's a pretty good deal, so, um, take advantage of that if you're listening and haven't had your vaccine yet.
Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, if I just made one, one closing comment, sorry.
No, we're, you know what, we're gonna add you to city attorney, uh,
City Attorney.
City attorney, yes, go ahead.
Well, I, I was just gonna say, let me, let me work with the city manager and we'll come out with a series of options for you to implement, um, and you can decide how you want.
It's just, it's some brainstorming, we, we, we get it and I know we're in the middle of the budget, so I understand. So, we understand. Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilor Mason?
Yeah, and I was also gonna say, um, so just, uh, I guess, um, circle on my conversation, I'm looking for some notes, but, um, also another thought is just to group that in with what we're working on under the stronger governance, um, since we're having that conversation anyway, like how do we make it a regular, reoccurring event and, and make it part of that larger conversation? I, I didn't want, I wanna make sure this didn't get lost, um, that, um, Hi, Hiwan mentioned during her presentation that they got out of a consent decree and I know that that takes a lot of work, uh, and a lot of follow-up, so I just wanted to make sure that we commend staff for doing that, um, we do not wanna be in consent decrees and it's hard to get out of them. Um, so thank you for the work on that. And then the last, um, announcement I just wanted to make is that Supervisor Canapa is having a big reopening state, uh, reopening of the state celebration on June fifteenth. Um, it's from eleven to two-thirty, people can register for the event, they're looking for volunteers, um, and you can just Google the event, uh, reopening Supervisor Canapa, it'll come up, um, and it's at, uh, Mike Nen Way in Koma. There's gonna be a barbecue, live entertainment and I believe that they're gonna have vaccinations also available. So, um, if you can make it, it, it may be worth your, um, your, your day or your hour to enjoy the reopening celebration. Thank you.
Any other council members, uh, with comments this evening? Vice Mayor, no? Um, I'm just gonna say to show that we're, as the council member Mason said, about the fifteenth of Canapa, but, uh, Sunday, going to the city park and watching, once again, some traditions back, Peewees, the, their last year playing at Diamond Two and then having the traditional, um, Parkside, uh, Saint Roberts, uh, baseball game was nice to see some, uh, community out and some things returning to normalcy, but outside doing the right thing. So, um, kinda nice to see that we're, we're getting there. So, um, anyway, with that said, uh, on a personal note, I, I will see all of you tomorrow at, uh, five o'clock. And, uh, with that, we're gonna go ahead and turn to the next regular sound, uh, city council meeting, which we held on June the twenty-second, twenty twenty-one at seven o'clock via Zoom. Everybody enjoy your evening and we'll see you, uh, soon.
Bye-bye.